Please note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please let me know. Pursuant to Governor Baker's June 16, 2021 signing of an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extension of his March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, and that's General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until August 1, 2022, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted both in person and via remote public participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410. Our conference ID is 134208476, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. Well, this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access, and we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. Just a reminder for everyone, please mute your mics and turn off your camera until you're called. Let me start with a roll call. Select Board Member Davis.
Present.
Select Board Member Metters.
Present.
Select Board Member DeCastro.
Present.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Present.
And the Chair, Peter Kokolos, is present. Just an overview of tonight's meeting. We start with, we have two sets of meeting minutes, October 19th, October 26th. Then we go into our public announcements on agenda item request, and that's, I'll have, I'll have a number of them, and I think there may be one or two from the board, and then I'll go to the public. Excuse me. Then we get into our new business. Public, and our new business is, first one is coronavirus, second is our drinking water PFAS, an update on PFAS. Yes. Public comments on our business agenda, which are, which are subsequent to the public hearing that will come next, and all of, we'll have public inputs on all of those except for EED, which is a charter review committee, which is being a board discussion only of the board. It is a policy issue. Our public hearing is going to be on tree hearing. Then we have, again, business agendas. We have a citizen agenda request for plastic bottle ban lift, then followed by consider donations, seaside links, 6T, consider, then consider a petition for private road taking, and then the charter review committee request to the Board of Selectmen, which, which will be board only. Then Chatham elected school committee vacancy and information on that. And then we get into our 2020 census redistricting, and then finally, committee appointments. So, having said that, we go to our public announcements and agenda item requests. I do have a few.
Minute.
Ah, that's right. Thank you very much. I just didn't follow my own agenda. Let's look at October 19.
Motion to approve.
You'll have a second?
Second.
Any changes or additions? Seeing none. Okay. Mr. Dykens.
Abstained. Wasn't there.
Mr. DeCastro.
Aye.
Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
The Chair says aye. Okay, next are October 26 minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. DeCastro, and then Mr. Dykens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On page six, at the very end, I would like to add a sentence after the word noted. "A request was made for a future Select Board Agenda Item to Consider This Proposal." I'll repeat that. "A request was made for a future Select Board Agenda Item to Consider This Proposal." Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On page five, in the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th paragraph that starts, Director Halela, just the sentence that starts, "Some concern was expressed at the amount of turnbacks," and I would like to add, "And a request was made to receive a list of open positions and the length of time they have been vacant."
You get that, Shana?
"And a request was made to receive a list of open positions and the length of time that they have been vacant."
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. DeCastro.
Aye.
Dykens.
Aye.
All right. Now we'll get into our public announcements. Let me start off. I have three. First one is, is a, it's a, it's a hard one for me in a way. Louis Masson, I don't know if many of you know him, but he was a volunteer and a member of the Chatham-Marconi Membership Board. He passed away this past week, and he was 93 years young. He was a, he was a forming member and a, and an instrumental volunteer. His knowledge and history, I'm reading, paraphrasing some of the, his bio, history of the Chatham Radio WC and Center workings were invaluable, especially in his, his initiative, and used his own cost to preserve a lot of the equipment and the furniture that was, was part of the history of that museum. Not to get into a number of things, but he was a curator of that, of an exhibit. He, she's a chief and a teaching renowned broadcaster and fellow radio enthusiast Walter Cronkite to narrate the then unknown center's first video. They, they call it legendary. It is. He contacted him, and Walter Cronkite came out, and if you haven't seen that video, it's a, it's just superb. And I, I could tell you that he was a, an individual who, who showed, and, and it was a working museum, and it was a hands-on museum, and people that came in were really appreciative of the fact that he was doing the ticker tapes and all of that kind of stuff, and my grandkids loved him, and so did Princess Marconi, Marconi's daughter. So she came twice, and he had to be on the schedule. So, thank you, Louis. Next point I have is, has to do with last night's mobile, we had a, a open forum on mobile food trucks. I thought it went very well. We had upwards of 25 people. We had a good dialogue. We had a number of good, of, of recommendations and, and concerns. So I thank everyone who, who participated in that. And the third thing is, let me see if I can find it, because it's next week's forum on the senior center. Like I said, Jill, I had it right here. It's next week. Okay. There we go. All right. I just don't want to have it wrong. We have a senior center community forum on November 9. It's in lieu of our regular Board of Selectmen meeting. It's going to be a facilitated community forum, and it'll be held in, like I said, in place of the Selectmen meeting, and it starts at 6:30. The part, you're welcome to attend here, like some, so we have a number of people here, which is nice to see, or you can do it online or by phone. It'll be moderated by Brad Schiff. I want to make comment that there are five questions. I'll read those. I wasn't going to, but I think I will, so that they're on the record. Five questions that will be posed, and each participant will have three minutes to voice your opinion, your concerns, and suggestions. This is not unlike all the other, other public forums that we've had before. The five questions are, the first one is, "Do you want a new senior center in Chatham? Why and why not?" Second, "What were the lessons learned from the previous proposed senior center sites which were not approved, and what can we do better this time?" Third, "Where should a new Chatham senior center be located? What is your reasoning?" Four, "What type of new programming and amenities would you like to see at the senior center?" And fifth, "What else would you like us to, to know about the new senior center?" You can email your comments, questions, to thecommunityforum@chatham-mass.gov. You also, public comments will be accepted by email until Friday, November 12 at 5:00 PM, and of course, the inputs that, that we receive will put together to, for consideration for a later meeting, and we'll, we can get into that. There's a number of ways to join. There's a press release. You can also, I'd, I'd encourage you to join the Community Voice Portal at www.chatham-ma.gov/communityvoice. And in there, you look for Senior Center and New Senior Center Project, and there's a whole host of history that's been done. And many of you, you can see a number of them, people in here who, who know the history and have been involved from the beginning. So it's worthwhile to do that. Did I miss anything, Jill? Okay. All right. Okay. Any announcements from the board? Corey?
Not an announcement, a future agenda item request, if I may please. So based on some recent conversations I've had, I kind of feel obligated to add this request. So I know the Fisherman Storage scenario has, is proceeding, and we're going to get an extension into the spring, so that's, that's a good first step. But I would like to put on our agenda a conversation with a status on that conversation, as far as we've identified one potential site, and I'd like to understand what would qualify it or disqualify it as another location for this activity, if there are any policy questions that this board needs to consider, and if there are any other unknown hurdles that we need to address so we could have a determination, because my understanding is, the Airport Commission was looking for definitive end to the, for the process, and that this extension is a one-time thing. So between now and the spring, we need to address all these various issues. So if we could just kind of get a status and, and potentially some other action items, depending on what is brought up in the near future, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure. Anyone else? Jill?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just wanted to provide a brief report about storm response, and also to thank the team for all of their hard work and effort for a pretty long duration. So after an event, we do a department head meeting, and we just go through what's worked, lessons learned, lessons learned, and this event was particularly challenging, but also we had just had a tabletop on personal care sites and charging stations and how to set up for that, and that was over the summer. So while we didn't designate a personal care site, we did open town offices for people to use to charge their devices, come in if they just need a break, when it was safe for them to leave their homes. And we saw that we had about 48 people who took advantage of that through either the community center or they were across the street here at the police training room. They were able to walk in there. And we also had 32 calls to the Emergency Operations Center, the EOC, and the community center. So we were able to, as we were open, because we had power, we were able to help residents, and we thought that was really important. We also had an ever-source person on site over at our, at our EOC, which is at the fire station in the training room, and that really helped us coordinate our own efforts, and we used a new software program through teams on how to record requests, record requests, how to note that they're addressed, they're still pending, or they're open, but also got to sit side by side by an ever-source liaison who had their computer activated, and they were able to, I guess, process our, our requests directly. So that was through a new hub that they tried out called the municipal hub. So we had a good experience. We do have some fine tuning that we need to work on in case we do have to open a personal care center, which is a little different than a charging station, warming station, because there's some other amenities that we have to provide. But it was a good opportunity to work through our emergency management plan, and I just wanted to thank, on your behalf, to thank the, the team for their response and for the duration.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
Anything else? Have any comments or agenda item requests from the public?
Gloria Freeman.
You see her?
Over there.
Oh, there you, okay, Gloria. I should have known you would be there. Welcome.
Thank you, Gloria Freeman, excuse me. Several of us are not clear on what you said about the public being permitted to speak during the discussion of the agenda item concerning the Select Board serving as the Airport Commission. Would you, can you understand me?
You could take it off. That's all right.
Could you repeat that, please?
Yeah. We received a request from the Charter Review Committee for our perspectives to the Select Board, all right, on, on, the issue of before the Charter Review Committee. That, that perspective is an opinion of the board, and it's a policy discussion of the board, and that does not include public input. It's as simple as that, and that's not unusual.
But certainly, we can address that issue during the public comment period?
No.
No?
No.
On the business agenda?
That's what I said.
I'll see you in court, Peter.
Okay. You could talk to my lawyer, too. We've stopped discussions, then, if we talk to my.
Comment before the agenda item.
No, I wasn't going to. Yeah. Do I have any comment? If, if I have, I'm sorry.
Put your mic on.
It is. Do I, anything, anything from the board? I mean, I'm, I'm, that's the way I understand it. That's the way I've, our legal position is, just if anybody has a comment. This is a public item.
This is, this is tricky. I mean, you know my general policy when it comes to public comment, so I won't rehash that, although I do think we have a, so kind of an issue with how it's presented, because it is presented as board discussion, which, the way it is printed.
It says board discussion, then underneath it, it says board discussion, and that's board discussion. Maybe it should have said board discussion only. It's not something that's new. We, we have done this for other policy issues.
For what it's worth, I have no issue with public comment, but that's just.
Think of it. You want to make a public comment on, on a policy issue that we're going to discuss, and then you're going to take it over and go to the Charter Review Committee, who has to make a decision. Now, of course, we've all seen the email. It just came in and said, oh, by the way, I'm going to change it, but that's not the point here. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, the item that.
Excuse me, could you speak up, please? We can't hear you.
Sorry. I have it on. Can you hear me now?
We'll go back a small amount.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, the item that Gloria is referring to is an agenda item that I requested, and we were asked to comment on the proposal that's before the Charter Review Committee submitted by Mr. Bixby. Mr. Carr, the Chair of that committee, asked for our opinion, and that's why I requested it go on the agenda. You're correct, Mr. Chairman, in saying that we have had items previously described or annotated as board discussion, and that did not allow for public comment, either during, contemporaneously during the agenda item presentation, or previously, although that may have predated the current board policy. I don't remember. I would just say, I would have no issue if you wanted to allow for public comment. I think it probably should occur during the public comment period, but I'll leave that up to the Chair's discretion if you want to choose to have it. I've, I'm very committed to what I've submitted to the board. I suspect there's not going to be anything that anybody on this board or anybody else is going to be able to say to me to change my position, but I'm happy to listen to what people say. I always do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And Shereen, just one second. It's, is, is it the point that, that says board discussion above it, and then underneath where it says you're the considered draft letter of opposition? I've always thought of something that's, that's, that's an element of what's above it before. I wouldn't put two above it, board discussions now, but I, I think I understand.
I interpret that to mean one item. I had that conversation with the town manager yesterday. I think the D is simply a heading, and the item, the business item before the board is DI.
That's correct.
And I'm asking, I'm going to ask the boards to consider the letter that I've submitted. Thank you.
Thank you. Shereen?
So I'm reading the agenda item D as Chatham Charter Review Committee Request for Select Board Input. And, and so I, I'm assuming that it's our input to the, to the Charter Review Committee. I'm pretty sure that this, whatever this happens here today will be a subject of, of much debate within the Charter Review Committee and with our, you know, at another time. But I assume that this was going to be a, a review, a request for our input, and that's my impression that it was a working, a board discussion only. That's how I read it.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
This is normally not a debate, but go ahead.
Will you have your board vote on that? I think we'd like to see, excuse me, their, everyone's position, because certainly that was not clear to any of us, or we wouldn't be here tonight. And with all due respect, it's outrageous and undemocratic to have so many requirements that keep us from participating in our local government. We came here tonight, and we would like to speak with you. We would like to speak during the discussion, but if we have to speak during the part of the agenda when you are, we are discussing your business agenda items, so be it. But I think in fairness, we should be permitted to speak.
Corey?
All right. Now, I mean, this is going to be no secret, my position on this. I think from an efficiency point of view, I would, I have, I've never had issue with public comment, and I was opening it up tonight. I would rather see the board have our discussion, be clear of what our position is tonight, you know, let the audience and anyone out there understand where our conversation leads to, and then open it up to public comment from then on, because this is my, you know, my position. From previous conversations, you know, public does not know where we're going to fall on this. You know, it's, it's a guessing game. So I would, from an efficiency point of view, I'd be perfectly comfortable with a public comment following our board discussion after, on that agenda item.
Okay. Thank you. Gloria, I understand where you're coming from.
Thank you.
There are policy issues that, that this board has to do. It happened at other boards, too, and they, the policy issues are, are not open to public discussion. However, I take, I, I have a problem with the comment you made about how difficult it is for you to have public input. Public input, there's lots of public input here. You're not stopped from having public input. Maybe on certain discussion items, you have it, have to say it at a different time. You go to another, another bunch of towns, and you don't, you don't see what we have here, which I think is the right way to do it. I took this position because it's a policy issue to the board. I talked to council about it. He said we could do that. Now, having said that, it's, it's my decision as a, as a, as a director. I'm not going to take any more comment on this. All right? And that, and that's, that is, that's, that's now where, where I'm going with it is. And that, and that's, that is, that's, that's now where, where I'm going with it is that, okay, I'll, since I have Mr. Castro and Mr. Corey, I'm not done yet. Please. There's a, there's a conflict of interest, there's a, I won't go through it. But anyway, I will take, we will take public comment on this issue beforehand at the public comment time, which is right after our drinking water. Okay?
Okay.
That's when we'll do it. And I'll tell you, I do it because of what I heard at the Board, but please do not use the fact that we are against public comment, or it's so difficult to have public comment. It is very easy in this town to have public comment. You may not agree with what we decide. That's fine. But I, that bothers me more than anything else, and that's it. And it's, for me, it's over. Okay? We'll take public comment, and I would appreciate it if a bunch of, if you, and we're going to have a number of people who are going to speak. Can I see a raise of hands, please, who want to speak? Two, three, four, five, six. All right. Would you limit your time to about four minutes? You can do that?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
I just want to be sure. We are to speak right after the tree hearing or after the plastic water ban?
Right after drinking water testing.
Oh.
Yes.
Okay. Got it. Thank you very much.
Three C, just like we've done for the last eight months. You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to... Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Elaine Gibbs. I'm not sure if this needs to be an agenda item, or if it can be implemented by the town manager. I appreciate the comments that Jill had made earlier about being able to have some public buildings open because they have power. We just came off another three or four days without power, and that nor'easter was nowhere near as severe. Some storms we've had, but three quarters of the Cape was out. It seems the frequency and scope of the outages is increasing, and we were fortunate that the temperatures were mild. As I've done every time after we've lost power over the last four years, I've requested this Board approve putting a generator that we've paid for that's sitting unused behind the fire department to be connected to the community center so that it can be used as a warming and charging station. Residents shouldn't have to go searching when the entire town is out for places to get warm, particularly after dark, when we have a very simple centrally located town building as a solution. We should not be facing another winter that we, that we know we will lose power again in, when elderly people are in their homes without generators, with no heat, no electricity, no phone charging ability without sitting in their cars, and if they're on wells, no water. We can have our community center with drinking water that has enough space and bathrooms open for such a temporary emergency. If staffing is an issue, one or two police officers can be detailed there. I think it's a small price to pay for the safety of residents, and I'm hoping this is the last time I ask that the community center be used. We cannot and should not have to rely on the county or the state to take care of our own residents when they're likely without power as well. This is a simple fix. It could be done tomorrow. The safety of our residents should be the first priority, and I believe residents will be grateful to know that we have a backup plan in place this winter that they can go to without having to go down to Harwich and spend three days in another facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Anyone else?
Peter, if I could just state, so the shelters were not activated, but the community center does have a generator that powers the entire building, including the elevator. But the elevator, there were some issues with that. There was a power surge, so there was, it's not operable up to the second floor. So, but yes, that was something that we did with our tabletop exercise to, purposely to test if the community center could be a personal care site. And that's a little different than a shelter, and even more different from discharging. So I just wanted to put out there, there is a generator.
Thank you. Mr. Fulton?
Yes, I have a brief public announcement. President Martin Van Buren said, "There is a power in public opinion in this country, and I thank God for it, for it is the most honest and best of all powers, which will not tolerate an incompetent or unworthy man to hold in his weak or wicked hands the lives and fortunes of his fellow citizens."
With somebody, with somebody, never mind. Thank you, Mr. Fulton. All right, let's get on with coronavirus. Yeah. Doctor... I see him. There he is. Okay. Dr. Dunkinson. Welcome, Dr. Bob.
Good evening, members of the Board, members of the public. So just quickly, coronavirus update, because I realize you have a lot on your agenda tonight. So let me share my screen here quickly. And the first thing I want to show you is our monthly case count. And as you can see, we had, and this is through the end of October. I haven't updated anything for November yet. It's only November 2nd. We had 10 cases in October of 2021. We had eight cases in October of last year, October 2020. So we're just about even with where we were last year. We have two active cases right now. Those are cases that are still within their 10-day period from either their diagnosis through a positive COVID test or the onset of symptoms. All the other cases that we had earlier in October have now cleared and been gone beyond that 10-day period. Of the 10 cases that we had in October of this year, five of those occurred in vaccinated individuals. Two of the individuals were not vaccinated, and three of the individuals, we don't have any information on, generally because they have not responded to the outreach from the various contact tracers, either at the local VNA or with the state. And so they have not reported on their vaccination status. So basically, 50% of the cases that we've had in October of this year were in previously vaccinated individuals. And that's not unusual. We've been talking about these breakthrough cases now, you know, for months, that, as you can expect, no vaccine is 100% effective. But clearly, based on the symptoms that most of the people who have been vaccinated, and then subsequently were indicated to be positive, their symptoms were very mild compared to unvaccinated individuals who generally end up in a hospital setting, and sometimes even more severely ill than that. So that's our current case count. Hopefully, we, this downward trend continues, and we are past the August and September spike that we had. And hopefully, we don't see a further spike going into the upcoming holiday season like we did last year. I don't think anyone in the public health community is expecting similar conditions just based on the fact that a large number of individuals are now vaccinated. So just quickly, let me show you where we are with vaccinations in Chatham. This is a figure that we used to show on a fairly regular basis. We basically stopped showing it back at the end of July. And you can see the bottom graph here is as of July 20th. And the upper graph is the vaccination status of Chatham residents as of October 26th, which is the last date for data from the state. This data comes out weekly, and it's based on the previous two-week period. And so you can see there, you know, there hasn't been a ton of change since July, although in the number of cat, in number of the age categories, we are now at 100% vaccinated. And again, this is based on individuals per capita in those various age ranges and not absolute numbers, if you will. And hopefully, the next time we may present this data, we will be able to show what's going on in the five-to-11-year-old age demographic, because the CDC panel was meeting this afternoon on that topic. The FDA had signed off on the Pfizer vaccine for those individuals, five to 11-years-old, last week. The CDC is meeting on it this week, actually this afternoon. And so hopefully, later tonight or early tomorrow morning, we will get word that those individuals, five to 11-years-old, are now able to get the Pfizer vaccine, which will be the, you know, kind of the last big demographic that has not been able to get the vaccine yet. In terms of our percent positivity and average daily incident rate, as you can see on this graph, things have been going down the last couple of weeks in October. After we had that spike in late August and into September, we did see a slight upward tick in the percent positivity on October 28th, the last date for which data is reported. And our percent positivity on that date was 1.25%, which was the second lowest on Cape Cod. The previous week, on the 21st of October, we were at 1.02%. And Chatham had the, actually had the lowest percent positivity of the 15 towns on the Cape. So that's good news. You know, obviously, we would like to see that trend continue down. But if we stay right around 1%, that's not necessarily a bad thing. We're well below the line now.
Yeah, we're getting feedback. Someone's on...
Well below the 5% line, which is where a pandemic is considered basically out of control. So we're well below that line, which continues to be good news. And then finally, I just wanted to show the statewide age distribution. We've shown this on a fairly regular basis. And this just highlights that, once again, that age demographic between 20 and 39-year-olds, those are the two highest percentage of new cases in the state of Massachusetts. And it has been that way for several months now, that that is the age demographic where we see most of the cases. Although, we are seeing an uptick in cases in the younger demographic, which I think we've all heard about, as the older demographics all get vaccinated. You know, we're seeing that increase in cases in the younger children. But hopefully, that will start to reverse itself once that five-to-11-year-old demographic is able to receive the vaccine. And then I will stop sharing my screen and just give you a quick update on the Board of Health meeting Monday night. The Board did discuss their mask mandate for public meetings in Chatham Town Buildings, such as yours. The Board discussed it at some length, but they were not yet comfortable at rescinding that mandate. They'd like to see what, where we are in a couple of weeks. And hopefully, the caseload continues to be low. They just weren't comfortable doing it on the basis of just October alone. They just want to see how things shake out over the next couple of weeks. And then I wouldn't be surprised if the Board rescinds their mask mandate, and we go back to the, basically, the guidelines from the state and CDC, which indicate if you're not vaccinated, you should wear a mask, or you're, if you're at high risk of COVID, you should wear a mask in indoor settings. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anything from the Board? Have any, any public questions, comments? Thank you, Dr. Bob.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next up is our PFAS, Drinking Water Testing and Pumping. And I understand, and Tom Temple is on the phone. Welcome, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Select Board and residents. Well 4, just as a quick update, Well 4 is currently running approximately three to five hours per day. Well water, water department personnel are on site just to make sure everything's running smoothly with the, with the well and the operations. The department plans to run Well 4 for approximately five to six hours next week, moving forward so we can start work on South Chatham well site to do routine preventative maintenance on those wells. Mass DEP issued sampling schedule for Indian Hill Well 4. This includes monthly PFAS sampling. The water division took PFAS sampling, the last sample on 1019, which we're still waiting for. I have attached in the Agenda Report, the, all the information that we have up to date, which was, the last sampling that we received was 10-5. The department plans to go ahead and sample, the next well sampling for Wells 5 and 8 will be November 2nd and 16th. Well 5 and 8 still remain shut down. We're in the process of Western and Sampson looking for securing two GAC vessels to service Wells 5 and 8 as they move forward with the design work on that. Wells 10, they began the engineering work on the final design for Wells 10 and 11. And currently, we have the final month's report for pumpage, which is 32.5% less than this current time last year. So everything is in fairly great operating shape right now, and moving forward with all the designs for the Wells 10 and 11, as well as 5 and 8, trying to get squared away for that and get those up and running as soon as we can. If anybody has any question, I'd be happy to answer.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Tom. I have Dean first, and then Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tom, two questions. First, with respect, with respect to Well Number 4, you said that's online as of today?
That went online as of Monday. We had approval from Mass DEP and Select Board. We put that into play. We're only running, originally, we were going to run it five to six hours, but we decided to, you know, ease in and just do three, you know, three to four hours and while our staff was there. And then we decided that we'll push off and start on the routine maintenance on South Chatham Wells next week, and we'll probably run it at five to six hours. But everything's running good. All our, all our levels are good where we need to be, so things look good for that.
When will it be in a position to replenish what's lost from 5 and 8? Because this may have a bearing on an item that's coming up later on on the agenda.
Right now, because we're in the off-season, we're just, we're alternating and shutting down the various wells as we're servicing and, you know, kind of alternating them all through because of the slow period of time. But, you know, as far as, you know, running it fully, we'll probably, probably it won't be for, you know, a couple of months. We'll be putting it in full, you know, 10, 12-hour time until that point in time. We're just kind of giving all the wells a break, where we've had so much use in pumpage over the last several months.
So if things progress in a couple of months, Well Number 4 will be in a position to take up the slack that's lost by 5 and 8? Is that what you're saying? Or will there still be a deficit?
There'll still be a deficit with Well 4. It won't cover all of 5 and 8. But again, our hope is that we were able to get Well 5 up on the temporary GACs up by springtime, and that'll certainly kick in and give us more water than we've had thus far, so.
The other question I had, and Doc, Doc, with respect to the samples, I think you said the most recent samples were those that were showing from September 7th on the material, in the material in the packet. But Dr. Dunkinson sent around an email late this afternoon that shows sample results from the 21st.
Yeah, that's correct. We, in my report, as I indicated, at that point in time, I had samples from 10-5. We received these samples. In my, in my Agenda Report, I said that we were waiting for samples for, from the 19th. We've since received that. They are under, they are under the potpourri trillion that we're looking for, but we still have those wells offline, Wells 5 and 8.
So, so for the benefit of those listening, I think it's probably worth noting that as I read the chart, on Well 5, treated and untreated, the samples were 16.4 slash 15.2. Five, two, I think that has to do with the locations. September? We don't have October. I'm sorry. I'm looking, I'm looking at the end. I'm sorry. Thank you, Jeff. It's, so the 19th from October, sorry. October 19th. I lost it again. Okay. For Well 5, it's 18.1 slash 18.6. Well 5 treated, 18.6 slash 17.4. I think I have them in the right order.
Dean, Dr. Bob is up, if you want.
Why don't you do it, Dr. Dunkinson?
Yes, thank you. Yes, we did, late this afternoon, we did receive the results for the October 19 sampling. And I updated the spreadsheet. And if you let me share my screen here, I can... And I updated the spreadsheet, and if you let me share my screen here, I can show you So here is the most updated table with the results from October 19th. And you can see that there was one sample taken out of Well Number 4 treated, which was indicated by the lab as non-detect. But I, we, I've asked for some clarification for that, because there were, you know, there's a fair number of different constituents of PFAS. The six that the state regulates, that are shown in this table, are indicated. And for those six, the lab indicated non-detect, but there were some other PFAS constituents in the Well Number 4 sample that were detected at very low levels, around one or less than one part per trillion. For Well Number 5, you can see we had results of 18.1 and 18.6. We take duplicate samples for Well Number 5 treated, it was 18.6 and 17.4. And so those two, when you average them out over all the samples that have been taken since last April, Well Number 5 is averaging now about 17.5, on an average of all the various samples we've taken. For Well Number 8, a little bit less. We received results today in the 14 parts per trillion range. And when you average out over all the samples that have been taken, that was averaged out to about 13 and a half or so, between raw water and treated water. So that's the latest information. And as Tom indicated, we're going to be sampling again this week. It's taking the lab about two weeks, a little over two weeks, to provide the results to us, because we're no longer paying for the expedited sample results. And the lab is extremely busy with a lot of other communities, as you can expect, that are now doing PFAS sampling. So that's the latest data that we have on the various wells in Chatham.
Thank you, Dr. Bob.
And, yes.
Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a question for Tom on the GAC vessels. Is that something, are those vessels something that we need, take a long lead time? Are they readily available? Or given the supply chain disruptions we've had lately in the supply chain, that, those vessels are pretty critical to our PFAS treatment? So I just wonder if we've got enough time to order them and get them in place? That's my first question.
You lose Tom?
You lose Tom? His number, his phone's up. Hey, Tom?
He's muted. Star 6, is it unmute?
Star 6, Tom.
Yeah. Short answer to the question, Mr. Chairman, those vessels right now have a five-to-six-month lead time. And as we've indicated the last couple of weeks, as well as the town meeting, that's why we were very optimistic when town meeting appropriated the funds. The order for those vessels was placed within a couple of days, with the hopes that we'd get them, you know, say by April of next year, and be able to get them online.
Good, thank you, Dr. Bob. And I had a comment. We talked about percent decrease in utilization, the amount of gallons that we've used in the month of October. But I wanted to read the numbers, if, that last year, we used, in the month of October, 41,105,300 gallons of water in the town. This October, we used 27,407,400 gallons. That's a decrease of 13,690, call it 13,700,000 gallons, a decrease of some 34, 35%. So the, I think the mandatory water restrictions are working. I think the fact we've had some good, great rain has, has helped as well. And I think we're doing a good job in terms of, of utilizing our water, and be careful, circumspect with the, with respect to the utilization of our water. It's extremely important. But it's, it's, it's astounding, I think. It's, it's a really, really good result. And I wanted to give voice to that. And I thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else on the Board? Any public comment? Questions? Okay, thank, thank you very much, Tom and Dr. Bob.
Are we going to talk about the water? So, um, plastic water?
Uh, excuse me, it's, Ms., uh, Ms., yeah. Ms. Nickerson, if you have a comment, would you come up to the, to the podium?
Peter, she was asking about the agenda. I don't know.
I know that.
Yes, I, I don't have the printed agenda. I wasn't sure if we're going on to the plastic water bottles. No?
The, which one? Water bottles? No. Hang on a second, and I'll, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about, so you know, we're gonna have public comment on our agenda items. Then we'll have a public hearing. Then we'll talk about the bottled water.
Okay.
Okay? Super. Yeah.
Hi.
Uh, we're not speaking on that now.
Oh.
No.
Comments? Public comments? Not yet on this?
Not yet. You're gonna talk about the, the, the bottled water?
Yes.
Okay.
We're getting to public comments.
We're, yeah, we're getting to it.
Okay.
Dean, hang on a second, you're already up.
Public comments.
Just, just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, so, we're going into the public comment period next.
We should be doing it now.
So the comments on business item EA, which is the bottled water, that, those would take place now, although I would anticipate you would, that Ms. Gibbs, who requested that agenda item, would speak during the?
That's correct. I, I was gonna call on Ms. Gibbs first, before we did anything on her agenda item. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Nickerson. Okay, you will be up next. We're gonna, we're taking public comments on everything that's going to follow. So would you give your name, and then make your comments, please?
Okay, thank you. Nicole Stern. And I'd like to speak to the ban of single-use plastic bottles. This is not a single-use plastic bottle. Sure you can all see that. Since the meeting, we've become aware of the extent of PFAS in our wells. Although, I was very happy to hear the report that we got today, but we know that that changes from month to month. Hopefully, it'll continue in the right direction. Dr. Duncanson has assured us that our drinking water is safe, and I trust that it is. However, we have many citizens, especially seniors, and those sensitive to chemicals, or with autoimmune diseases, that have already transitioned to bottled water. Now, at the, at the moment, they're still drinking smaller ones, but many of them have decided they might as well start with what's required. And I'm suggesting that we postpone the ban. And here's a few reasons, okay? This is very heavy, okay? So you have to imagine seniors, people that have even more issues than some of our seniors, young people too. First, you have to shop for it, and you've got to pick it up and put it in your basket. Then you have to get to your car, and you have to pick it up and put it in your car. And then you get home, and you have to pick it up and take it out of your car. And then hopefully, you don't have any steps to get into your house. So you've kind of made it. And that's when you're in good shape, okay? I'm sure we all know people that wouldn't even be able to pick this up, never mind do all the things I just mentioned. So Dr. Duncanson did support that people that had immune problems, or other issues, that to be on the safe side, that maybe they should consider drinking bottled water. Okay. This is a gallon jug. It creates a lot of problems, which I just, you know, covered. And, but the, the hardest issue, and I'm happy to bring it over, and Mr. Nikastro, if you'd like to fill your water bottle, that's the most challenging for older adults, or people that have arthritis. I know there are people right here in this room, that I know personally, because I tried to gift one of these to a friend of mine, and she said she wouldn't be able to handle it, wouldn't be able to carry it, wouldn't be able to get it out of her car. We didn't even get to the pouring part. So I'm asking that you please consider postponing this ban, until we can all feel safe and get back to using our faucets. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you state your name?
Would you like a refill? Would you?
I have bottled water in there.
This is really good stuff.
Would you state your name, please?
I thought I did, Nicole Stern.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Nickerson?
Hi.
Okay. Oh, I see it.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm, are you ready for me?
Yes, I am, thank you.
I'm Susannah Nickerson, 606 Main Street. I'm the liaison of Chatham, to, I am Sustainable Practices Liaison in Chatham. I have so many things to say, but I, mostly what I'd like to say is that when you buy bottled water, you, you really don't know, it has, whether it's been tested or not. So bottled water, you know, when it, when you pick it up off the shelf, you don't know if it has been tested, you don't know where it has come from. So I just put that out to people who think that bottled water is protecting them, because it's really not, and it's much more expensive. The prohibition on non-carbonated, single-use plastic water bottles affects only bottles less than one gallon in size. Though the goal of the bylaw was to promote behavioral change to recyclables, there are many substitutes for single-use plastic, which has known human health impacts and environmental impacts as well. Many merchants have begun to carry aluminum and boxed water. Further, the issue, these issues were brought up at town meeting, and were voted on in significant majority in favor of the article. So I think the town has voted, they've decided already, that, that our water is safe enough to drink, and that the ill effects of plastic are huge, both environmentally and health issues to human beings. So if you are buying, or drinking from plastic water bottles to be safe, you are not. The plastics themselves have toxins in them, especially when heated. You know, say if you leave your bottled water in the car, you're constantly drinking those plastic chemicals, which are very much harmful to human beings. And I guess that's all I have to say at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Nickerson.
Thank you.
What I'd like to do, is anyone else gonna speak to the bottled water issue? Ms., Ms. Freeman? And I'll check on?
Yeah, we, we have one person who wants to participate in teams as well.
Yeah, they, uh, uh, well, go ahead, Gloria, excuse me.
Thank you, Gloria Freeman. The environment is important to me, and so is water quality. But I'm looking for a reprieve from the ban on the sale of single-use bottles of water, excuse me, at least until we can depend on our municipal water, its quality and quantity. Here's my problem. Carrying in big plastic jugs of water, and then pouring from them. What I do is buy the small, single-use bottles, and carry in a few each day from the car for drinking and cooking. I know many people who do the same thing. And we are wondering where we will have to drive off Cape to buy single-use bottles, because we can't manage the big ones. We just can't. Many people believe we are having a water emergency, and no one knows what the future will bring. So I hope that until we know that our drinking water is without PFAS and contamination, that this ban can be postponed. I respect town meeting's vote, and it should be implemented, but not yet. Wait until the water situation in Chatham is resolved. Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. Anyone else? I have a David on, on Teams. Is this concerning the bottled water? I can't tell which David it is.
They may, Peter.
I, I, Mr. Bixby, how are you?
Yeah, how you doing? I, I didn't mean to, I thought my hand was lowered, and I wasn't going to raise it until we got into the discussion of the, of the, of the charter amendment. So I'll take my hand down and wait till we get into that discussion.
Okay, well, great, thank you very much. And let's just go down, anyone that wants to speak on Seaside Links? Okay. Continue, anyone who wants to speak on it, consider a, consider petition for private road taking. And I don't see anyone online either. Okay, now we'll get to the one, we'll have a number of people. We'll start with the Chatham Charter Review Committee request for Select Board input on public comments received to amend the charter for Select Board to serve as airport commissioners. And since I had David online first, and he's the, he's the one that put it up to the Charter Commission Committee, go ahead, David, if you're still on.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
All right, it's David Bixby. I'm, I'm the guy that caused all these problems. I have listened to, I've received a lot of comments, I've read, Commissioner, Select Person Nikastro's commentary on, on my proposal. And as a result, I have revised my proposed amendment. I think the, yes?
No, go ahead.
I think the revision addressed a lot of the problems. I don't know if it addresses the willingness of the Select Board to take on role of Airport Commission, but I think the proposal as amended solves almost every problem I'm aware of. I don't know if you, I sent you an email today, I don't know if you received it, and I don't know if you had a chance to distribute it.
Yeah, it was distributed.
Okay, well, it's, it's, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, because people will fall asleep, but do you want me to read the amendment, or?
Well, that's, that's different than what we're gonna vote on. We can't, we can't speak on that one, since it wasn't the one that was sent by the Charter Review Committee.
I know. Well, I think, in a sense, that this discussion, or the memo is, is, in some regards, irrelevant at this point, if I've withdrawn my amendment and I'm submitting a new one. I've tried to address all of Mr. Nikastro's.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the basic premise is that, that you, you sent it out, you did send it out when, today, or like, yeah, last night? And I was able to?
I said, I may have sent it out today, and I'm, I'm sorry about that, but I did the best I could.
No, I understand, but we can't, we can't consider that on, because it hasn't been announced publicly. No one has a chance to either rebut it or not, so I guess you'd have to put it back to the Charter Review Committee.
Well, I've, I've already done that.
Okay. Okay.
Do you want me to talk about it all or not?
Not on that one, no. If you can talk, you, we're going to probably vote or on whatever, you know, on what you said originally. If you want to speak to that, that's fine.
Well, I, I've withdrawn my original proposal, so it makes no sense to comment on a memo that comments on something that doesn't exist.
Any comments from the board? Yeah, I know. I'm just going to ask for the question.
Mr. Chairman, I would have no problem if Mr. Bixby or others wanted to talk about why they think the select board should be the airport commission in terms of our, our comment back to the Charter Review Committee. I think that, that what this board needs to do tonight is focus on the invitation that we got from Mr. Carr, who forwarded us Mr. Bixby's original proposal.
Yeah, we have to. We have no choice.
If without reference to Mr. Bixby's latest iteration, he wants to talk about the advisability of the select board telling, commenting to the Charter Review Committee that we don't think that having the select board as the airport commission is a good idea, which is part of my draft letter, I, I would have no problem with that. But I, I think you should put some limitations on, so that we're not getting too far afield.
No, I understand.
That's my thought, anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Castro. Yeah, I would agree. Like I said, David, if you want to speak to it, you know, especially the point that Mr. Castro brought up, but not on how you changed it. We don't have a choice. It's just not, not appropriate.
Yeah, I, I understand. I'm not prepared to go into the reasons why the board should exercise leadership here. I think other people are going to get up and speak. I'm going to defer to them. I, I just find that the, we have in Chatham here a bunch of disparate, separate groups doing planning for the town, and none of them talk together amongst themselves. We have a lot of chickens with no heads. I'd like to put a head in charge of the chickens, and that's the select board. You have conflicts between the town comprehensive plan, you have an airport master plan that doesn't recognize the town comprehensive plan, or the, or, or the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. You've got a Route 28 Carter Study that doesn't recognize the airport. You've got a runway protection zone right smack dab in the middle of the proposed West Chatham Neighborhood Center. I, I, I can't understand how you guys don't understand that, or that you can't see that that's a problem and calls for some leadership. And if not your leadership, whose? You got to straighten this all out. It's a mess, quite simply. You need to fix it. That's, I guess that's the gist of the argument here, and the way to do that is by assuming responsibility for the airport commission, so that you can take charge of the, you've made agreements with the Massachusetts DOT and with the FAA. You make these agreements, you sign these agreements, and you, you commit to obligations, and then you ignore them. I'm saying step up, take charge, comply with what you agreed to, and the only way you can do that is by being the airport commission. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, David. Yeah, I know. Yeah. Okay. So more on the airport.
Excuse me for a minute. I, I missed that last comment.
I'm sorry. Yeah, okay.
I, I think when you guys whisper back and forth that you should do that on the record.
Yeah, I, I get it. Thank you. Do you have any more people?
It's not a question of getting it, it's a question of complying with the law.
Well.
Thank you. Thank you.
That was a comment that said, normally, we do not have the, the audience either clap or, or, or give their opinions on something like that now. That is not an unreasonable request for, to maintain.
Mr. Chairman, what I said to you was that this is a business meeting and hope that people would conduct themselves thus way.
That's exactly.
I have no problem with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak on the airport? And on the one in front of us, I see a hand in the back. And I have one online, Mr. Levitt, and I'll go to him next, and then there's Gloria. It looks like Mr., ah, Mr. Thompson, I didn't recognize you there.
Okay, you introduced me.
No, 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 you still have to say your name.
Michael Thompson, Mr. Chairman, Selectman. Let me take this off. I think that'll be clearer. I'm going to go to the, David Bixby makes some good points, but he's a, I would like to simplify things a little bit for you. I'll go to what I had at the end of my talk here. Mr. Bixby provided an outline for this bylaw proposal, but it's sort of couched in legalistic terms and so on. What I'd like to do is say, give you a specific proposal, which you can chew on. I propose that the select board would appoint five of its members to a new airport commission, as long as at least one had aeronautic experience. Otherwise, or optionally, it would appoint four of its members and one citizen with aeronautic experience. This new airport commission would, could then act as a sponsor and chief executive determining the future of the airport, which should have been happening all along, which, of course, it hasn't. But it would also have responsibility for the care and custody of the airport, as required under mass general law, but mostly as a supervisory work. No dean, you wouldn't have to be in there doing detailed work at the airport. Most of that day-to-day running of the airport would continue to be done by the airport manager, Gail Associates, and we have a town employee who spends quite a lot of time involved in airport activities. And so that's essentially the, the case today, that the airport commission does not do this sort of day-to-day handling of stuff. It's supervisory, and I think that would continue to be the role. It would also make sense to anticipate an ad hoc advisory committee without explicit powers or management responsibilities. So that's kind of my, my, my simple, simple summary. You know, the reason we are here today is that the town manager has made promises when signing each and every grant assurance, because the promises say that you, our select board, will exercise your rights, powers, and authority as sponsors of our airport. However, these promises continue to be ignored, not just you, this has been going on for many years. So this charter proposal really stems from desperation. We think the present airport commission has clearly acted inappropriately over several years, displaying a lack of any consideration for the residents of Chatham and the environment, and rejecting input from the community or you, the sponsor. The evidence, the existence of RPCs is also another issue, which puts many people in West Chatham in danger and jeopardizes the development of West Chatham, which is up for discussion at both the zoning board and the planning board. Mr. Castro calls structure, calls it structural infirmity, nice term, but really, there's a total breakdown of governance in the airport. There's an increasing number of the Chatham electorate who are concerned about the impact of the proposals and the commercialization of the airport and on our quality of life, and they cite nearby Hyannis Airport as an alternative. By the way, there were 572 turboprop operations, that's landing and takeoff, at the airport in the, in the last year, that's up to a couple of weeks ago, but only operations by 10 pilots listed with Chatham addresses. That's worth bearing in mind. So not having done something before, which is the comment that was made, is a reaction. It's not a reason. I've done many things that were not done before and been rewarded for them, and I think you should too. There's just one final point. In Pittsburgh, the mayor and the councilman are on their town airport commission, so there's at least a partial precedent for what is being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. I, I have one online, which is Mr. Levitt. Then I said, we'll go to Gloria, and then I'll wait. Okay, Mr. Levitt.
Thank you, Peter. Am I live?
Yeah, here are feedback, though.
I'm getting, I'm getting an echo from, from all of the previous speakers. Are you?
No, you're the only one.
Well, that's good. Thank you. That's good to hear. And I want to thank you, Peter, for, you know, I appreciate this opportunity. Mike Thompson is a hard act to follow, but I appreciate this opportunity to comment on charter change.
Hey, Rick. Rick, hang on a second. We're having real problems with hearing. There's a lot of feedback.
Sorry, people aren't muted on the.
On the line? If everyone would please mute your, your mics.
He probably has two devices turned on, Peter.
It could be. All, all of a sudden, it's off. No, it's not. I think Rick only has one device.
Yeah, I, yeah. I don't have two.
But you're getting an echo?
Yeah, sure are. It's, it's really bad. I'll tell you what, how's our IT guys? What do they think? Hey, Rick, I'm going to come back to you, okay? Let me get someone else and see if the IT guys.
I just muted him, so I don't, sure.
He's going to mute everybody?
I just muted Rick. Rick, if you want to try unmuting and see if that works?
Yeah, try again, Rick.
Yeah? Am I live?
No, he's still coming.
Well, I'll, I'll send you my, I'll send you my comments and.
Okay, I'll try a little bit later. We'll see what happens. Go back, back out. I said Gloria would be next. Welcome, Gloria.
Thank you. Excuse me, and thank you for allowing us to speak. I'm Gloria Freeman. As you know, Chatham's Town Council has opined that the select board's responsibility in regard to the Chatham Airport is limited to the power of appointment of airport commission members and acceptance of appropriate airport-related warrant articles for town meetings. Incredibly, and unfortunately, you, our elected officials, have no jurisdiction over plans or policies at the airport, none, no opportunity to govern. Citizens and taxpayers are powerless, without any ability to participate in a meaningful way about the airport's impact on quality of life issues, on the local environment, including air and water quality, and on the long-term future of the airport. Townspeople appreciate our local airport and want it to have a viable future, but its governance should be more inclusive of what the community wants, which is essentially no expansion of use at the airport. And the airport should not be governed by an independent body with no accountability to the public. Leadership and governance must come from you, and so we are asking you, the executive authority of the town, to step in and serve as members of the airport commission temporarily or permanently. Please accept the concept of serving. There are numerous ways to do this. If I had more time, I'd suggest some of them, but simply the details can be worked out later. The charter states that you are the chief policymaking agency for all of Chatham. Town Council has stated that there is no bar to prevent you from doing this through a charter or bylaw amendment. Such action would provide an opportunity for all stakeholders to work united, to provide an airport which serves the community and does not detrimentally, excuse me, and does not detrimentally impact our town, its natural resources, or its people's safety and health. Such is not the case now, and I don't believe it will be in the future unless you are willing to set direction and policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. Who did I say was next? I got, and I'm going to leave Renee off for a minute. I see your hand up, Renee. I'll be calling you after a couple more. Please.
My name is Martin Fussberg. Today's my anniversary. My wife and I bought our home in Chatham 30 years ago today, right after the perfect storm. And we bought it right near the airport, which we thought was a very nice thing and has historically been a nice thing. The airport is an asset to the town of Chatham, but it is of the town of Chatham. It belongs to the people of Chatham, the businesses of Chatham, and therefore, the controlling influence should be a body that represents all of Chatham, that cares about all of Chatham, and that answers to the people of Chatham, and that's the select board. Now, if the select board doesn't want to be the airport commission entirely, well, there's a place for an airport commission that has expertise in the daily operations. But the airport commission does not represent Chatham as a whole. It represents the interests of the airport. It represents the pilots, the owners of the fueling facility, and other interests, and therefore, can be involved in day-to-day, but shouldn't be involved in making key decisions like an airport master plan. That should belong to the select board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go ahead. It looks like Mrs. Thompson. Please, come on. Okay, I have people in line. We'll just do it that way, if you want.
Yes, I think it's easier that way and quicker, actually.
I got Renee coming up.
Okay, so I'm Margaret Thompson.
Thank you, Margaret.
I find myself utterly dumbfounded by Selectman Dean Nick Castro's statement suggesting that there's no structural infirmity in the area of airport governance. He was present, you were present, Dean, at the airport commission meeting on November 2019, when it was clear that they'd gone to the FAA with a plan for 46 navigation easements without any discussion with members of the select board or of householders who'd be impacted if the plan was realized. Now, chairperson of the select board at that time, Shereen Davis, told them that that was not acceptable, but it's still in the airport layout plan, which is their final plan. Do you know that? Have you looked at the airport layout plan? I hope you have. In March 2020, the airport commission requested to put implementation of the environmental assessment on the warrant for town meeting. They were told they needed to produce a plan before this would be granted. COVID hit, so they avoided producing a plan and got money from the CARES Act. I don't know whether they were entitled to that, but anyway, that's where they got it, I think. They have consistently disregarded any input from the public, going back to the skydiving controversy by the AC. It was expanded from five to seven members, and two very conscientious, hardworking members of the public were appointed. The AC disliked their input, which was at times not in agreement with what they wanted to do, so they lobbied the select board not to reappoint them, and the select board gave in. In November 2019, the select board told the AC to form an advisory committee of members of the public, but they refused. Is this good governance? The select board have swallowed the mantra of the AC, hook, line, and sinker, that it is only a small group of residents who are dissatisfied, although you know that any public forum, it is only about 10% of those who are concerned who ever speak out, probably less than that. Do you know how many business owners are afraid to speak for fear of losing customers? Because I've spoken to a number. The proposed amendment to the charter is a desperate attempt to get the select board to take charge in deciding what kind of airport we want in our community and what kind of airport we want in our community and setting policy, coordinating airport plans with zoning and other aspects of Chatham life. The planning board didn't even know that the runway protection zone existed until community members brought it to their attention. I mean, it's really, you know, everybody's doing their own thing, and the airport commission has no clue about its huge impact on the whole town. So please be leaders. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. A couple of comments. I'm going to ask for Renee next, and then I'll go into a line. The Charter Review Committee, in their letter to us, said they want to, they're going to focus, and maybe it'll be fine, they're going to focus on the idea of a Select Board becoming an airport commission, and that they don't want to get into some of the details. I understand the details that Ms. Thompson brought up may apply to that, but you may have a, may have a more difficult time when you go to Charter Review. I'll let their chair discuss it. So Renee, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Pacaulus. I would just like to, first of all, you know, I have read Mr. Nacastro's, you know, eight-point letter, and I wanted to mention my support for that letter and its contents. But I want to specifically draw attention to Section E of the Massachusetts Grant Assurances that were made on numerous occasions, probably most recently when the project for, you know, repaving the taxiways was done. And I'd like to, you know, quote directly from the grant assurance, Section E. The title is Certification of the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen of Chatham. And the contents in the first paragraph, which is the only one I'll read, is, "Notwithstanding any powers that may be granted to the Board of Selectmen of Chatham, the town agrees not to attempt to reorganize the airport commission, or in any way to interfere with the autonomy and authority of the airport commission as created under Chapter 90, Section 51E of the General Laws, without the express approval of the Aeronautics Division." It seems very clear and very direct that any reorganization would be in violation of this specific promise in the grant assurances. You know, I have to say that the proposal put forward by Mr. Bixby, as modified perhaps, but, you know, fundamentally, it's an affront to the airport commission and its members who do represent the entire community and has members that are in all parts of the community and represent different interests. There is nothing wrong with the structure of the commission as it stands. Now, the commission, it may be considered unresponsive to a small group of citizens who wish to restrict aviation and embroil the community in litigation with mass DOT and the FAA. But it is responsive to the community at large, which really want to preserve and protect the airport and make it safer for all, working in cooperation, not conflict, with state and federal authorities. The Select Board was unresponsive to those folks who didn't want the rotaries in West Chatham, but it went forward anyway. And leadership, it requires decisions even when some folks are not pleased. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Renee. Okay, next up. Please, and now, welcome again.
Thank you. Carol Gordon from South Chatham. Well, I can't respond to Mr. Haas's comments, but I can say in prior meetings with the airport commission, I don't feel that they really have represented the people's views. Anyway, I too am asking the Select Board to consider serving as airport commissioners. As the Select Board, you are the chief policymaking agency of the town. The Charter doesn't carve out the airport and make that an exception to your authority, nor do any laws or regulations. Town Council did confirm that you can serve as airport commission. Many of us agree. The airport is a huge part of Chatham, and yet it doesn't seem to be a people's, on the people's radar, on everyone's radar, as if it is separate and disconnected from the rest of Chatham. We need to remember that the surrounding area is vulnerable to anything that could happen there and is an important part of Chatham, and thus it is your responsibility. For many years, the runway protection zone has been ignored as construction has occurred. This construction has risked the safety of people and property on the ground, also in conflict with FAA regulations. The planning board is and has been discounting these regulations in their plans to rezone West Chatham. We need our Select Board to be involved in overseeing the airport, which seems to be overlooked in the planning process for West Chatham. I hope you will give sincere, serious thought to serving as airport commissioners. It may help to resolve the numerous conflicts that have been occurring. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that Juris? I can't tell with the mic. Yeah, welcome, Juris.
Juris Suxens, Chatham. I'm here speaking out because my concern is the direction that the airport is taking. I'm not going to go into details of what you should do, how you should do it, but maybe why you should do it. The airport is owned by the town, and a town, by definition, the Select Board should decide whether the airport supports Chatham or becomes one that becomes an airport in competition with Hyannis Airport. The current airport master plan that has been in effect for 20 years, I will read just a couple sentences. "The commission," meaning the airport commission, "is committed to developing the airport in accordance with the airport mission statement." And I will just read one statement of about three or four. "The commission has no plan to promote or attract air carrier traffic," which I will talk about a little bit later, "to the airport. The users have traditionally been recreational flyers, sightseeing tourists, summer and year-round residents, all of whom use small airplanes." The commission, and this is key, "the commission wishes to continue these type of uses in the future in order to protect the character that is distinctive of Chatham and Cape Cod." What a fantastic mission statement. Unfortunately, the airport commission has done everything but that. They have violated that mission statement by introducing corporate jets, commercial charter turboprops from the East Coast flying, and the volume has greatly introduced, has greatly increased, as the previous speaker spoke of 572 operations by turboprop planes. And not what I would call small airplanes, as the mission statement says. It talked about that they have no plans to attract air carrier traffic. The new updated airport master plan has a statement in that that FAA approves of air carrier traffic into Chatham-sized airport with up to 2,500 seats per year. Why has that been added? Because the airport commission wants to start introducing commercial air traffic, because the town manager benefits from charging airport fees, my opinion.
You mean, you mean the airport manager?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, I get it.
I apologize. Airport manager. So is this really what Chatham wants in a regional airport that's in competition with Hyannis Airport by bringing in corporate jets, turboprops, and charter and carrier, air carrier, that now FAA says, they may say, wait a minute, Chatham, you can't stop this. We approved this. So in summary, the Select Board has the opportunity to decide the future of the airport. You can decide the future of the airport. Do you want an airport with corporate jets, charter turboprops, and commercial air carrier traffic? An airport that's going to be in competition with Hyannis Airport? Or the airport that was spelled out in the current airport master plan? The commission wishes to continue the use of this future to protect the character that is distinctive of Chatham and Cape Cod. What happened to the character of Chatham and Cape Cod that is not in turboprops and jet planes and commercial air traffic? Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Juris. I'm going to try Rick one more time. His hand's up. You want to try again, Rick?
I will try again. Am I live?
Yeah, I don't hear anything in the background either.
Yeah, neither do I. Thank you. First of all, in response to a previous speaker, Chatham's Select Board was hugely responsive to having rotaries in West Chatham. I can attest to that personally, and so can you, Peter. Let me just say that I agree with all of the previous speakers, except the one I just commented on. The Select Board's meeting with the airport commission in September raised more questions than it answered. The Charter Review Committee properly asked, where is the right place for airport decisions to be made? Airports impact a community in more ways than any other activity, because of demands the airport makes that impact residential neighborhoods and especially West Chatham Village, demands that adversely affect resident's safety, peace and quiet, property values, and affordable housing development. It is necessary for the Selectmen, for your board, Peter, to establish clear policy goals that limit the impact of any future airport development, just like Juris talked about. Airport policy and airport management are two different things. I'm going to say that again. Airport policy and airport management are two different things. Under state law, airport commissions are responsible only for airport management. Managers do not make policy. Chatham's town manager doesn't make town policy. You do, under our Home Rule Charter, as the town's chief policymakers. Responsibility for policymaking affecting the scope and impact of airport development and the lives of Chatham residents rests solely with our elected officials, answering to voters, and cannot be delegated without a charter amendment. I don't disagree with Dean's analysis, although the proposal to include selectmen on the airport commission is similar to what you are planning for Chatham's Housing Trust. But that is not the issue. The full Select Board is responsible for exercising its charter authority for making airport policy. It is a fiction for anyone to suggest that your hands are tied by Washington bureaucrats. You have options, like adjusting the runway thresholds, if you choose to adopt them, for the benefit of all, the benefit of all Chatham residents, especially working families who will be hurt if large areas of West Chatham Village become dead RPZ zones. Thank you, Peter. I appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Levitt. Let's see, I see Mr. Fulton, and I have another person online, Liz, I guess it's Ruze, or Ruze, and that'll be next, and then we'll go next. Okay?
Good evening. My name again is James Fulton. Thank you very much, all of you, for allowing us to speak on this concept that is before you. With regard to the proposal for a charter amendment, I don't, I don't know what law school Mr. Haas went to, but I do agree 100% with the comments of Pat Costello. Having some or all of you serve as airport commission members is perfectly legal, but delegating governance of the airport to a committee would not be lawful. He's absolutely, he's 100% correct in his legal opinion. I would embrace Dr. Thompson's idea for a charter amendment requiring that a majority of the members of the airport commission be selectmen of the town. That would make a majority of the commission directly answerable to the people, at the same time that it would make it easy to have at least one person, perhaps an appointee, on the commission who has experience in aeronautics. Selectman Nacastro, I read your memo, and your suggestion is that if I don't like your appointees to the airport commission, that I vote you out of office. But what if I happen to like your position on the senior center? Now, what if I happen to like your position on plastic bottles in Chatham? And what if I happen to like your position on dozens of other issues on which you have demonstrated strong leadership? Do you want to put me in a position that I have to vote you out of office because I don't like your appointments to the airport commission? No, I think this charter amendment is a much better idea than that. The mission of the current airport commission sadly seems to be the advancement of private interests. Have you ever read the new mission statement of the airport commission? Quote, "The mission of the Chatham Municipal Airport Commission is to support the use of the airport as a general aviation facility that focuses on the needs of the private pilot, aircraft owner, the flying public, and aviation enthusiast." Nowhere, nowhere in the mission statement does it say anything about protecting the general public, the lives, the property values, or the preferences of the people who live on the ground. A claim has been made by one or more of you in the past that the airport commission has a balanced membership. Some members who are protecting private interests and others who are looking out for the community. Forgive me, but this entire concept of yours is off-base. The law requires that no member of a governing body protect private interests. 100% of the membership of the airport commission is required to look out for only the interests of the public. The Supreme Judicial Court of Massachusetts held in the Ellis case, Article 6 of the Massachusetts Declaration of Rights prohibits the improper use of state power for private interests. It is the Select Board's responsibility, as several speakers have pointed out, to set overall policy for the town and establish the direction that the town takes on significant issues. You certainly should exercise responsibility for policies about a significant town property that has a major impact on the town itself. The attitude that... The attitude that there is nothing we can do has prevented the Select Board from considering what it might do, and I urge you to open your minds to a different attitude.
Thank you, Mr. Fulton. Especially the comment about public opinion. Especially the part about welcoming the fact that we allowed public opinion.
I appreciate that you...
I do too. Thank you.
This is what Chatham is all about. We love each other, and we may disagree, but at least we're allowed to express our opinions.
Thank you. On Teams, I have Liz, and I hope I don't say this improperly, Ruse.
You got it right, Liz Ruse. Can you hear me?
Thank you, Liz. Welcome.
Hi, I'm 123 George Ryder South, or should I say Logan Runway 5. Right in that zone. This is the third house our family has owned in 60 years in West Chatham, all within a half a mile. And this is where we currently live. We bought a year ago, and the planes are literally 100 feet above my family of five. And I'm just going to be very brief, because I know a lot of people have gone over there four minutes, but the character of Chatham is tremendous, and it's going downhill by the airport. I mean, I looked at moving to Brewster or Harwich and my family, and my sisters have moved there and bought their own homes, and everyone's like, you have to be in Chatham. I had no idea how incredibly loud the airport is, and the number. One time, there was like 35 planes within 90 minutes, and you have to go inside, you cannot continue to talk. So I fully agree with the man that just spoke about caring about the people on the ground and the properties that are there. When I was younger, we used to watch Skydivers. It was just a sightseeing airport, and now it's truly become Logan. And at a previous meeting I've attended, some pilot got on who was so upset because he had to land his plane in Hyannis, an Uber to Chatham, and offered to give anybody a ride. Well, that kind of plane should be landing in Hyannis. Overall, I agree with everyone. One person said it's a small group of people. Well, that is baloney. It's a huge group of people, but some of them are, they're in the summer and are home with their kids during the dinner hour doing this. Our neighborhood has about 80 houses, and a lot of people care. But to juggle, to get on, to speak up, we need people who are going to represent us. It is not a small group of people by any stretch of the imagination. And I love the man who just spoke, I think it's Mr. Fulton, and I totally agree with Mike and Margaret Tomsett. They spoke beautifully about what needs to be done, and I appreciate the fact of you taking the time to listen. I was an elementary school principal for 34 years, and we have a school committee. Everybody was given public comment, ad nauseam. Everybody felt heard. We might not agree, but you cannot shut that down. It is extremely vital. That's it.
Thank you, Liz. Welcome next. Do I have any more?
Am I up now?
Oh, hi, Ann. I recognize you. Welcome.
I don't begin to, my name is Ann Thompson. Good evening, everyone, ladies and gentlemen. I don't begin to have the expertise of all these previous speakers. They're awesome. However, for over five years, the public has watched on Channel 18, attended meetings, and read in the local paper a festering and constant controversy on the subject of Chatham airport issues. There have been multiple lawsuits costing our citizens many tax dollars, and there will be more. There has been sadly a great divide between the Airport Commission and a majority of the public. For some reason, the Commission has continued to distance themselves from the citizens of Chatham, who have spoken out at numerous meetings and written umpteen letters to the Chronicle, to no avail. Our goal should be a solution, not endless vitriolic sparring. Our own town council, Pat Costello, has stated that the sponsors of the airport are indeed the town of Chatham, and we, the citizens of Chatham, constitute the town. Based on that legal opinion, the citizens of Chatham should have a vote on the members of a newly created Airport Commission. We have elected our Select Board, and they represent us. It seems only rational that they should take on the job of airport commissions. There is no question that their job as commissioners would include hiring an airport specialist to advise and guide them, just as they turn to the Water and Sewer Committee to, and their expertise on water-related matters. Our town administrators' first aim should be reaching out to their citizens and including them in important governing decisions. COVID has created too much distance between the public and those who steer our town policies. When the support, with the support of Mr. Costello, I strongly encourage this board to take on the job and responsibility for our airport as its full-time commissioners. We need you to advocate for us. We elected you to be our leaders in all matters, Chatham, including the airport. Thank you for letting us speak.
Thank you, Ann. Anyone else? Anyone else online or any on the telephone? Seeing none, we'll continue with our agenda. Thank you all. Let's go. Next up is our public hearing, and it has to do with a tree hearing request by Eversource. Ms., Corey, read the announcement.
All right. Chatham Select Board knows of public hearing for tree removal. As required by Mass. General Law, Chapter 87, the Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November 2, 2021, at 5:30 PM in the Town Hall Annex located at 261 George Ryder Road, Chatham, Mass. to consider a request from Eversource Electric to remove trees along part of Middle Road to install utility poles and lines to connect to the new solar farm. The meeting is being conducted in person and with remote participation via Microsoft Teams. For remote participation, please click the link below or call in number 1508-945-4410, conference ID 134208476-Pound. Signed, Daniel L. Tobin, Tree Warden. It was printed in the Cape Cod Times on October 19, 2021.
Thank you, Corey. Mr. Tobin, how are you, Dan?
Good evening, members, Chairman Kokolos, and members of the board, members of the public. I'm appearing before you tonight as the Tree Warden. Normally, my Tree Warden duties are related to removing dangerous and hazardous trees around town within the town right-of-way on town-owned roads. Occasionally, we have a request from a resident or whatnot to remove a tree in front of the house. I hold a Tree Warden hearing for that. In any case, if someone objects to the decision of the Tree Warden, their appeal is to the Select Board for final determination on that. The discussion before you this evening is the installation of utility lines to connect the solar farm from Sam Ryder Road into the solar farm along Middle Road. Eversource had held a poll hearing with you previously back in September. There was some, I think, misunderstanding within things as to the fact that trees do need to be removed to set those poles in place and make the connection to the solar farm, as no utility poles currently exist along that road. I've received a request from the Vegetation Management Division of Eversource to discuss the tree removals that would be needed along Sam Ryder, excuse me, along Middle Road to connect that. And this evening, I have Paul Sellers and Jordan Young from the Eversource team. They are involved in the Vegetation Management section. As you can imagine, they've been rather busy in the last week or so, but are happy to be here this evening to talk to you about the trees that need to be moved and efforts as to how that may be mitigated as well. So with that, I'll turn that over to Mr. Sellers, who can give you more detail, and I'll be available to answer any other questions that you may have of me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Well, thank you. Good evening. As Dan pointed out, we have about 60 trees that we've identified along Middle Road...
Just announce yourself. We have to do that.
I'm sorry. My name is Paul Sellers. I'm with Eversource Energy, and I'm the manager of Vegetation Management here in Massachusetts. So continuing, Middle Road, we've identified about 60 trees that need to be removed to provide the proper clearance for what will be seven pole spans that will lead into the new solar farm area. The majority of the trees, well, actually, all of the trees are native indigenous species, pine, white oak, black oak, some cherry make up the predominance of the species through that area. They're all lean towards a smaller stature, about half of them are between an inch and a half and six inches in diameter. So that will provide us with the necessary clearance for the three-phase line that will take the power out of the solar farm and put it into the grid. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have or concerns.
Let me start with Corey, Dean, and then Jeff.
Okay. First question, you said about 60 trees, but in the memo, we had 50. So we've increased the number of trees?
The, well, we included all of the smaller diameter trees into that mix, so it's 60 trees altogether.
Okay. I mean, just for my, whatever's it worth, I mean, you know, here we are a couple years ago, calling ourselves Tree City USA. You know, 60 trees is a lot of vegetation. If they're healthy, obviously, they're serving a purpose for, you know, soil control, you know, environmental benefits, whatever. 60 trees is a lot of trees, and to, well, having to take some of them down for such a project is a hard pill to swallow for me. You know, I personally like the underground, you know, I like underground wiring much, much better. I know there's a cost associated with it, and if this were maybe a dozen trees, you know, that's one thing, but you're talking about a whole lot of vegetation, and that's, I don't know if that's a position that we really want to take, at least I don't want to take. So I have a hard, hard time supporting a 60-tree removal for such a project. So I'm just going to put that out there.
Okay, Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this question first to you, I guess, Mr. Sellers. Who pays the cost of the tree removal? Does Eversource assume that?
Eversource would assume that, yes.
And you indicate, or it's indicated in the memo from the Tree Warden, that Eversource would be replacing these trees. Are you going to replace them with 60 trees? Do you know how many? It wasn't clear.
Sure. So the 60 trees, and should answer some of the concerns of the previous statement. Not all of the trees are perfectly healthy specimens. They're in varying degrees of, some are in distress, some are declining. You have a number of oak trees through that whole area that have been impacted by winter moth and gypsy moth and the drought over the last several years. So there, a lot of the trees are not in what we consider perfect condition. A number of the trees, why there are 60, is it's a buffer area along the roadside of Middle Road. So you have this condition called phototropism, where the trees are actually leaning in towards the roadway. So you have kind of distorted trunks on some of those as well. To the point that you're asking about the replacement of the trees, we had talked, I had talked with Dan, and we were proposing, within those seven pole spans, to do some tree replacements, do what we call a right tree, right place concept. Plant trees that will be compatible with the utility lines in the future, won't grow up. We won't be, over time, 10, 20 years from now, you know, trimming them back and distorting them. We'd like to plant something in there that would be a viable, long-term landscape. So I would be proposing that we plant three to four trees in between each of the seven pole spans, and then I would also recommend that we augment that with some lower-growth native species of shrubs, viburnums, inkberry, bayberry, those types of things that naturalize that area and provide a continuous buffer from the transfer station that's right behind that.
So you may be talking, in addition to the shrub we just mentioned, maybe about 25, 30 trees?
Oh, I have, I've noted about 30 trees and, and a minimum about 100 shrubs throughout that area.
And who's going to pay for those? Eversource?
That would be Eversource.
And when would that happen?
That would take place in the spring. So we've worked with Dan on finalizing a plan, species placement, what would go in there, what would be appropriate for a long-term landscape.
If you were to substitute underground utility connection instead, who would pay the cost of that?
That would be on, that would have to probably go back to the solar farm people, I would believe. But again, you need a place to put the underground, so it'd probably go in exactly the same spot where we're going to put the poles. So you would be removing a significant number of trees to accommodate the undergrounding effort.
This question might be for Dan as well. Has there been any, have there been any concerns or objections that you've heard from neighbors or anybody in town, the Friends of Trees or whatever?
Simply, the simple answer is that I have had no feedback to this point since this was brought to our attention and the legal advertisement that was done for that.
Yeah, Dan, do you think that the Friends of Trees might be aware of this issue?
I have not had discussions with the Friends of Trees on this particular matter, but, you know, it was generally advertised as this.
Okay. Thank you. I have no further questions at the moment.
Thank you, Dean. Jeff, would you mind if I had Shereen go first?
No, go ahead.
I missed, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions on the solar farm. Is that a public benefit project for the town of Chatham?
That, I could not answer for you.
Okay, so, all right. On the planting of the trees, the replants, is there a maintenance program that Eversource takes up to make sure or assure that they are healthily watered, and what if they die? Is there a contingency plan?
Yeah, we could certainly set up an initial watering effort, maintenance effort, and we can give you some guarantees if, you know, certain trees die, we'll more than have to come back and replace those.
Because we've been having historic droughts in the community, and plantings in the spring at a previous site near a solar farm did not go well for some of the plantings, and it was suggested that the plantings happen in a different time of year. The other question I had, I think that the maintenance question was key, but you said that if this is an issue to mitigate, whether it's going to be an underground project or an above-ground project, that you would have to go back to the solar farm themselves to see, to have them okay that? Is it...
Yes, some of we would have to pick up the cost of that.
I see.
The overhead project is already incorporated into the costs that were outlined, I believe, for the solar farm, but some would have to incur the cost of...
So I'd have to be interested to know whether that solar farm has any benefit to the town of Chatham as a utility before I would approve this project personally. The other piece of it, and this is for Dan, is that the abutters, we're dealing with, obviously, we'd like to work on some projects on Middle Road, and this solar farm has not been the best neighbors to some of the folks up there, and I just, I'd like to see that we have a good understanding with the neighbors, that they know and aware are, are aware that this is a proposal that could impact their neighborhood to have trees removed and then, you know, a replanting project going on. I know that you probably haven't had a lot of time, and the public notice serves as an appropriate advertisement, but as Dean has maybe reaching out to the Friends of Trees and the neighbors might be helpful.
Yeah. I have not been involved in the solar farm project, if you will, per se, but, you know, we're happy to have any additional discussion if there's, or answer questions, you know, if people want to bring them forward.
Great, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Shereen. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Selectman Nacaster, we found out who pays. If it's above ground, it's Eversource, and I would be interested in who might pay and their proclivity or their desire to go underground if we should ask to do that. I wouldn't approve until I saw a plan for what trees were planted and what kind of shrubs are going to be planted, so I really think we need a plan. And then, what's your timing on this? Is this imminent? You want to do this tomorrow, a week or two, a month, or what?
Well, the solar farm is essentially nearly complete, so they're looking to hook up and start contributing to the... to the power demands of the region. And so the, we would be clearing as soon as we were able to and get the poles in. The landscaping, well, it wouldn't take place until the spring at this point.
But, but you'd have a plan for the landscaping, how many trees, where they're going, what kind of shrubs you got to plant, et cetera, et cetera. Yeah, we've had some difficulty growing trees of late in town. So, you know, I think, I thought Selectman Davis is suggesting that we have some kind of a maintenance program as well. It's very important if, should we go this route. But I'm in favor of going underground. If we could do that, if we can't, then let's, let's get a good plan going for how we're going to recreate the environment.
For again?
So, and then I do note in the, in the size of the trees that you're going to cut down, they're not enormous trees. And, well, we don't have enormous trees on the Cape and they're so wind-borne or wind-worn, I should say. We don't really sometimes get the opportunity to grow enormous trees, but they're still what we got.
Oh, I agree.
And we're fairly protective. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you for coming. I have a, I, I went out to the area and, and I want to say I walked it just specifically. I was there. No, I was doing it for my PT. But most of the trees and the, the blue, the blue ribbons are close to the road. I didn't see many very deep. Were there any in there? I, I didn't sit there and count every tree, but there were, you know, a number of trees and small bushes, like you said, and there were a couple of trees that were, were a problem. How deep are you going in?
Just where you see those ribbons. So it doesn't really breach that far into, into the woodlot area. There may be one or two that, you know, had a significant angle on them that
Yeah.
we would, we would have removed or the canopy was so large that it was going to involve itself into the three-phase construction that was going to be at the top of the hole.
Yeah, I was, I was glad to hear that you were going to do some mitigation. Comments was mitigation. My first question was, what is it? So I sort of understand. I can understand where the, where the, my rest of my colleagues are coming from. They normally want to see a plan. I mean, a couple of us came off of the planning board and we had, when we did this and any kind of development we were putting in, even if it was something small, it was, it was either one-for-one tree or one or reliable tree somewhere else. I mean, that was just, that was just natural. And, and, and like Shereen mentioned, you know, there, we're working, trying to do things down there and removal of trees without a number of, of inputs. I notice I have at least one, I have one hand up that's in the audience that we'll get to. And we can discuss that anywhere, anywhere. I mean, as far as going underground, I understand that's expensive. It'll be interesting to see what would happen with something like that. But once you go underground, does that allow you to do more trees or more shrubs? I know the, the wires there, they're protected, but you can, you can put more, you could run them all the way down the road almost. Or am I exaggerating a little bit?
Well, not being an engineer, electrical engineer, I'm the arborist for the company, I'd be speaking a little out of turn. But again, it depends upon where, well, one, if the undergrounding option is viable and, and two, who could pay for it. But thirdly, where exactly that underground conduit system would go. Most likely, it would go, again, to the side of the road layout, within the road layout. So you'd still be in the same situation of having to remove trees. But then you would be hindered of what you could actually plant on top of that duck bank where the wires are. Because you're going to want to keep that clear. So you could actually create a larger void as far as the landscape goes.
Okay. Well, I did have a hand up, but I don't see it there anymore.
Mr. Chair, it was a representative from the Solar Project.
Okay.
Saw his name was David. I'm not sure if he's still on.
Danielle or Daniel?
No, David, but I think he's off.
Okay. I don't see, do we have any public comment? Seeing none. Bring it back to the board.
So are we looking to continue this public hearing then?
Pardon me?
Are we just going to look to continue the public hearing?
Well, I'd get a consensus from the board if we want to continue it. I don't personally have a problem. I normally don't give my opinion until you talk, but I personally have a problem with that, especially it'd be always nice to have a plan.
I agree with that, Peter. I, I'd like to continue this because I'd, I'd like to see that the neighborhood has a better understanding of what's going on.
Dean?
How long would we be continuing it and how long would it take them to put that plan together?
Yeah.
Which this is sense.
And how's our schedule for next, well, next week, we can't be the week after. Have to be at least two weeks. Right? That hurts, I mean, to be balanced. Does that hurt you at decision point?
No, I think we could probably get you a plan within the next two weeks and get some sort of answer on your undergrounding question.
Okay, what do you think? I don't have the agenda in front of me. Hold on.
I do.
I do.
Yeah, I think the 16th could work. We, you know, had some goals and objectives and some follow-up. But we also have, actually, that would be a great time because we have the utility poll hearing jointly owned for 76 and 16 as Sam Rider rode for Verizon. So it might be a good opportunity.
It's 16th? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right. Looking like the 16th. Jeff?
Mr. Chair, I move to continue this public hearing until November 16th.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, let me run through the group. Shereen?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Jeff, Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye, so see you back in two weeks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dan. Okay. First thing up is a citizen agenda request, plastic water bottle ban, lift or, or, excuse me, postponement. Elaine, welcome.
Thank you, Elaine Gibbs. At the end of the second day of town meeting on June 13th, with approximately 120 people in attendance, residents voted to ban the sale of non-carbonated, unflavored drinking water in containers under a gallon to become effective December 31st of this year. That's only seven weeks away. It was also at that town meeting that many residents only first heard the term PFAS and the serious situation we had in pumping capacity of our wells for drinking water. I think if we knew then what we know now, I doubt it would have passed. Currently, wells five and eight remain offline because of PFAS. We got the numbers tonight. They have been as high as 56 in some of those wells. We will not likely see them back online until next spring. That's what we were told tonight. 10 and 11 won't be operational until at least the spring of 2023. No one could have predicted at town meeting the implications of such a bottle ban and the unintended consequences for residents. It's been a high learning curve for all of us in the last five months. Section three of the bylaw titled exemption state sale or distribution subsequent to a declaration of emergency by the emergency managing director or duly authorized town officials affecting the availability or quality of drinking water to residents in the town shall be exempt from this bylaw until seven calendar days after such declaration ends. I request that as the duly authorized town officials, you delay the implementation of the ban on unflavored, non-carbonated drinking water under a gallon until we have more clarity about our drinking water and well situation, most likely this coming spring. I believe there's enough evidence for you to determine that the town emergency exists, certainly over the next six months. I think we're facing a confluence of events that no one could have expected or anticipated. While the intent of the ban is a good one, we need to be pragmatic. Drinking water needs to be refrigerated after opening. And as you have heard, gallon containers make that difficult for many because of both their weight and space that they may or may not have in their refrigerators. We're going into the winter with the potential of more power outages impacting those on wells who may need drinking water. If we have another drought or more wells show increase in PFAS, putting further pressure on our pumping capability, residents need to have a manageable alternative source of drinking water without having to go off Cape in search of smaller-than-gallon containers. While some might argue that PFAS have been found in bottled water, tests have been done by manufacturers of the major bottlers of water. And PFAS levels are one to two parts per trillion in unflavored and non-carbonated water. It's seltzers and flavored drinks where higher levels are found, normally in the five, six parts per trillion. I think timing's important. We've been warned that on both the national and local level, supply chains for all goods are going to be negatively impacted through the middle at least of 2022. We should make sure that local retailers do not cancel contracts with suppliers of drinking water in single-usage containers. Once those contracts are canceled, getting back on their distribution list will be difficult, if not impossible. But most importantly, while town officials have said our drinking water is currently safe because of its ubiquitous nature of PFAS, staff cannot guarantee that the PFAS won't rise above the 20 parts per trillion, forcing further well shutdowns until at least wells four, five, eight, 10, and 11 are fully operational with PFAS filtration systems installed, which is the objective. If what has occurred over these last months is not considered an emergency, then I don't know what would constitute one. I believe the primary role of government is to anticipate potential safety issues and access to supplies of drinking water for residents. Until PFAS filtration systems are in place, residents, particularly those with compromised autoimmune systems, should have the option for easy access to manageable bottled drinking water. We should not be adding unnecessary obstacles for residents to have a choice for a very basic need. Water quality and water access are critical items. I urge you to issue whatever you need to in order to postpone this ban until, once again, we have more clarity on what the condition of our water is going to be next spring. I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Elaine. I want to let Dr. Duncanson speak first, if he, if he's still there. He wrote the memo. Dr. Bob?
Yes, I'm here. I think the memo speaks for itself. I think Ms. Gibbs did a good job of explaining her position on this. I think at this point, it is up to the board as to whether or not you feel the current situation rises to an emergency because that is the appropriate way under the article that was passed at town meeting to address this issue.
Okay, thank you. Corey, then Dean, I'm sorry.
It's all right, go ahead.
All right, I'm sorry, Shereen. I, I, last time. Go ahead.
So I, I, I looked and I saw that the FDA, which regulates bottled water in the US, has not set limits on PFAS in bottled water at all as of this summer. And so I don't even think they're testing for it, actually. Unless somebody else has some other information. But the, you know, the plastic issue is a huge issue and it's an environmental issue that is a health issue. And, you know, we're, we, we discussed this in a, in relationship to, there are alternatives out there for small bottled water and you, and local stores are carrying them. They're aluminum and they're boxed. And, and so those alternatives are there. And I'm, I'm not really, I'm just stating this as a, as, 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 as how I see it. I'm not, one way or the other, opposed or not opposed to the, you know, issuing an emergency ban, except I am leaning more towards a no. But I need to have a little more convincing here to, to figure out if this is really an issue or not. Because there are alternatives out there. Drinking water is, our drinking water is safe. And I just, that's my issues. That's my, that's my statements for now.
Thank you. Corey?
Now, I just wanted to provide some information, my observation, I don't have my merchant hat on, just to kind of see what someone like myself sees and, you know, take the information at whatever face value you want. You know, back in the middle of the summer, availability of many water products were, was becoming, was harder to get. You used to go to, you know, our local distributors, we're not supplying different products. You would go to the grocery store, you, you just didn't see it on the shelves. Because there, the bigger companies are preparing for the bans that are, Chatham and other towns are implemented or have implemented. So even if we were to change this, I think certain availability of the product is already starting to creep in. The alternative materials, box water is, is an option. Glass, if anyone's noticed, glass is not becoming available to anything lately. I mean, you look at some of even the bigger juice companies like Nantucket Nectars and, you know, Voss Water. They're coming in plastic now. They're not coming in glass. So you're not seeing a lot of glass products in the soda water, juice categories anywhere. So if that's just raw material, if it's just economic component, it is what it is. You know, I, I have a shop, I, I can't, couldn't get Smart Water as of the end of August. Couldn't get it to save my life. So, which is fine. And from the conversations I've had with, with the distributor, they seem to be wanting to introduce these, these more flavored waters now. So you're going to see more flavored waters being introduced to the market because it doesn't get captured by the current ban. Getting box water and alternative packaging is difficult. I, I, I'm offering, I, I've, I was able to secure a, a company out of Chicago that I get 16-ounce aluminum bottles, ground shipped on a truck, pallet, dropped off to my location. It's not convenient. I reordered them again this summer and there was delays of raw materials. Shipping costs made the price, price go up. You know, if someone wants to do something other than tap water, I'm this concerned that the availability of the product may not really be there. I mean, unless you want to run up to off Cape to like a BJ's or some kind of larger entity, I think you're going to see a supply issue on the Cape. CVS is already cutting back. Local stores are cutting back. It's, it's, this, this started kicking in back in the summertime. So even if we were to change this ban and postpone it, I don't know if the supply is available. I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem with postponing the ban, but I don't know if legally we, we can. Town meeting did vote this in place. And I'm not sure if the wording, you know, I don't know if the wording would allow us to do that, to be honest with you, without really declaring an emergency. And I don't know if that is legally the best position to take. The only other question I do have, because obviously the ban will go into effect on December 30th of this year. And if we don't, it's a delicate slope to say. Would someone want to explain the enforcement issue of it? Because, you know, if someone, if, you know, what is the enforcement component? Who's policing it? What are the consequences that maybe, you know, maybe the local grocery stores might be able to bring in some stuff? I, I don't know. But there, there's a lot of elements to this. I think the simple fact is whether we, it's in place or not in place, plastic water bottles are going to be in short availability, you know, period. That's, that's my, that's my prediction from the, you know, as, as a vendor, as a, as a merchant, you're not seeing the stuff.
Corey, that's, that's for both, huh? And it's for plastics and for the alternatives?
Well, the, the plastic, the plastic, you know, there's different vendors, different companies, you know, this, you know, Coke, Polar, Pepsi, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, my situation, I can get the Sony bottles. I can get, I cannot get my Smart Water, you know. Back in August, couldn't get it, was back ordered, back ordered, back ordered. So I introduced another entity, which is a aluminum, 16-ounce aluminum screw tub container, which I am selling. But no local vendor has that. I ended up securing it from a place out in Chicago and it comes in a big truck on a pallet and it gets dropped at my location and then we process it from there. So it's not the most convenient way. And I don't know how many places are going to be able to handle that kind of volume of storage and, you know, you don't have a company, you know, so a beverage delivery guy come in with the truck and put it into your storeroom. You're, you're getting it dropped on your sidewalk and then you're dealing with it. So thank God my staff is very flexible and I appreciate their help and their strength. But it's not really the most convenient way right now. But it is an alternative. It is out there. I would think at some point, the larger beverage companies are going to start introducing, you know, screw top. But there is an extra cost, there's, you know, the cost, the cost of material. The availability, the caps became an issue. Even with the company I was dealing with, there was a two-week, almost a three-week delay in me getting my order because of issues with the, with the caps. So there's going to be a lot of components to the conversation. But I guess going back to my original thought is, even if we were to lift this, I think a lot of the companies are cutting back on their production of water in this region. So I don't think we're going to have as great of availability as we would maybe like to see. So that's, those are just my observations. And I'm happy to answer questions too.
Yeah, thanks, Corey. Dean?
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Corey, for that information. I did want to ask Dr. Duncanson a question. So Bob, under this bylaw, if the, if the select board were to declare an emergency, we could do that under this? Is that how, we, we have this authority to do that?
Yes, that, section three was, when, when the bylaw was being drafted, I put this language into. Yes, that, Section 3 was, when the bylaw was being drafted, I put this language into the draft bylaw, not thinking we'd ever need it, but thinking more along the lines of situations like hurricanes, or something like that, that, you know, might affect the public water supply. And, you know, as we all know, bottled water in that kind of situation is a frequent occurrence. You know, we saw the same thing in Hyannis Water, when they had PFAS first detected in their water system, they immediately started providing bottled water to, you know, to their residents. So, that was the kind of thinking, was by putting in Section 3, you or some other duly authorized entity would have the ability to declare an emergency, in which case, water in less than one gallon-sized plastic bottles could be sold in and out of Chatham. And, you know, we're now, that's what you're discussing tonight, if you want to implement that, you would have the ability to declare a water emergency, or just an emergency. And that would basically put this bylaw in abeyance until seven days after you've declared that emergency was no longer necessary. And however long that could be, whether it's a week, a month, a year, two years, whatever, this bylaw would basically be thrown and hold until you took the subsequent action.
I suspect we'd have to have a reasonable factual basis to declare that emergency, or it could be subject to potential legal challenge, I suspect. I'm just offering that.
Yeah, that's probably true. I mean, you know, the language in the bylaw doesn't really speak to what an emergency is, or what criteria might be used, so I think it's pretty broad.
Okay.
And so, I think it gives you the ability to, you know, to make that declaration. Obviously, you know, somebody could always challenge it, but I think it's pretty broad in how you guys might determine, or what you might determine to be the emergency.
So, as I recall the bylaw, there's an exception for the fire department. Do I remember that correctly? Because I don't have the other sections of the bylaw in front of me.
No, there is, there is no, the only exemption is the Section 3, which is the broad, there's no other exemption in this bylaw.
I thought our fire, to the town manager, I thought the fire department wanted to have the availability of plastic, a small plastic bottle of water.
It's not in the version that was adopted at town meeting.
So, what are they doing? Or what do they plan to do? Because I thought they-
We haven't declared a, an emergency order affecting the availability or quality of drinking water to residents in the town. If there was an event such as a hurricane, and we weren't able to provide water, then this could kick into place.
Are they likely to be shifting to the other bottling or canning options? Because they, as I recall, they wanted them on their vehicles for when they go out on emergency calls.
I haven't checked in with the FD to see, to see what they're using, if they're using carton water or canned water. That hasn't, I haven't had inquiry about that.
Corey has a-
I was just going to say, I mean, the ban hasn't gone into effect yet, so they can still use plastic bottles until the end of the, until December 30th.
Yes.
And I do know, because I know EMTs responded to some situations downtown, and they helped out, and they handed plastic bottles to the people they were responding to who had fallen in and gotten hurt and needed assistance. So, they were this summer using plastic bottles, which is still allowed.
Still allowed, yeah. I haven't, I don't know their plan after December 31st, but I'll-
But they'll have to have a plan if this stays in place.
Yes. Dean, I think what you may be referring to is, there was a change a couple of years ago that prevented the town itself-
The municipal one, yeah, the municipal one.
-from buying bottled water-
Okay.
...in plastic containers. So, you know, if the Department of Natural Resources wanted to get water, we couldn't buy it in plastic containers. And that, I believe, does have the exemption for the fire department that you're referring to. But that was a separate, that was not this article.
Thank you for-
That was a separate one that took place a couple of years ago.
Yeah, I do remember that. Thank you for refreshing my recollection. I voted against that one, but I did vote in favor of this bylaw at town meeting. So, I wanted to ask Elaine, I think you were in the room when I was asking Mr. Temple about well number four, and how long it would take to get that online, and he said a couple of months. It sounded from your presentation that you would want a delay longer than a couple of months.
Well, well number four does not pump enough to make up for five and eight, at all. And what he has said is, they are still showing fairly, they're below the 20, but they're at 18, five and eight. And their initial intent was to blend them. Well, if you're blending those of equal, it's not going to help.
Yeah.
And he said, "Spring maybe," is optimistic, that wells five and eight might go back online. And I guess I thought this was a no-brainer. I really did, because we have, a year ago, we didn't know what PFAS were. And at town meeting, we didn't know. We first heard about it. And they're serious. We've been told over and over and over again how serious it is. We're not, I mean, I never understood why we decided to ban drinking water, instead of Coke, flavored waters, all that kind of stuff. The stuff you shouldn't be drinking anyway, because it's got all kinds of chemicals in it.
I suspect that's coming.
But drinking water.
I suspect that's coming.
Yeah. It's counterintuitive. And so, now here we are, spending six, $7 million in the short term at the special town meeting. We are on a flight path that's going to take a long time. We only have nine wells that are operational, 10 and 11 never have been, and five of them have shown PFAS. And this is drinking water. 3,000 of the 6,000 citizens are over 65. We heard several of them tonight speak, and they represent lots of people, who said they can't do the gallons. Now, I haven't seen a problem with anything less than a gallon in the supermarkets. They're stacked up all over the place. Now, that may stop, but I think some people are going to continue to buy them and hoard them. And that's not really what you want to do, because you don't want it sitting around in bottles. But I think it's really insensitive to be more concerned about somebody throwing out, which they shouldn't be doing. Find them if you see them throwing out a bottle. I don't like the fact that people do that. But it's kind of a feel-good thing, when the reality is, there are people who need drinking water, and they need to be able to get it in their homes. And they live alone, or there's going to be an emergency. And they have to have it at, you know, the community center for people. So, I don't know what the problem is delaying it six months and revisit it. Because if we, if we let it go through, then it's guaranteed that all the stores in Chatham will stop ordering it, and then we'll never be able to get it back. So, I would really hope that common sense prevails, and said, this is, this is not, we did not anticipate this when 120 people voted on that Sunday. They hadn't a clue as to what PFAS were, and had not a clue that we had serious pumping problems, and did not know we were going to go into a drought. So, I hope you will do it, and you can revisit it anytime you want. If suddenly, miraculously, we're PFAS-free, and everything's good, and everybody's pumping water, and we're not in a drought, then you just pull the trigger and say, okay, that's it.
Okay. I'm kind of torn about what to do. I was coming into this, and I wanted to hear both sides on this.
And I would want to mention, Shereen said, I don't know if the FDA is testing the water, but all you have to do is go online, and there are all kinds of research companies who have been testing the top 10 drinking waters, and they test them for PFAS, and they've listed all of them, and it's the seltzer waters that are the ones that are higher.
Yeah.
So, there are tests available out there to see what the PFAS levels are.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Dr. Bob.
Yeah, I just need to correct a statement that the previous speaker just made. PFAS has not been detected in five of Chatham wells, it's only been detected in three wells. So, just for clarity, and so the public understands, PFAS has only been detected in wells four, five, and eight, and five and eight were immediately taken offline, four wasn't online at the time, and so I just wanted to clarify that for people.
I thought that I had seen in your things that early on, even though they were not pumping, when they did local testing, wells four did have low levels early on, when you first started testing.
Yes, that's what I said. PFAS was detected in three wells, four, five, and eight, not the five that you cited.
Okay, I see you corrected.
Yeah, I just, I started to say, you know, I tend to like personal choice. I am one of the people that buys these gallon jugs, and that's what's in there, and I, you know, there are different types of bottled water. And I, when PFAS emerged, I started, look, I know you don't see PFAS on the label, nobody's going to tell you that on the label, but I do look to see where they're getting their water from. And that made a difference in my choice, and it is cumbersome, and I, I mean, I can lift this stuff, but I can empathize with what Ms. Stern was saying earlier. So, I'm having a harder time with this than perhaps some other members of the board, but I think I'll wait to hear the rest of the comments before I decide how I'm going to vote on this. Thank you. Thank you for bringing it forward.
Yeah, Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Bob, are there, are there commercial filters that folks can buy to hook up into their house that will help them get comfortable that the water is safe, even though we know it's safe?
Yes, there are commercial filters available for PFAS. The difficulty is, you have to make sure that when you speak to a representative, that they provide actual data on the efficiency of that particular filter. And there are filters on the market that will get below the 70 parts per trillion health advisory from EPA, but may not be as effective getting down to levels below 20, which, as you know, is the Massachusetts Safe Drinking Water Act level.
Right.
So, you know, it's, it's like everything else, the consumer has to be sure that what they're spending their money on is really getting them where they need to be.
So, I'm relatively ambivalent as well, I echo Selectman Castro. However, I'm reluctant to declare an emergency, because I don't believe the quality of our drinking water is such that we have an emergency, and I believe we have enough water available, at least now, with four coming online, that it doesn't create an availability emergency, if you will. So, I'm reluctant to declare an emergency in order to get single-use plastic back in town, or to postpone it longer than, you know, postpone it. I think at some point, with the ban, the rest of the single-use plastic bans on the Cape, as we heard from Selectmen Metters, the market's going to react, and already has reacted. So, I would hope that the market would turn to box paper and to aluminum, which are both recyclable and less deteriorous to the environment than plastic, or not as negative to your health as plastic. So, I anticipate the market will respond, anticipate that over time, folks will look at filters, and I think, kind of makes the conversation semi moot, if in fact, the market's not going to supply single-use plastic to the Cape, or to Chatham, if we're having difficulty getting it. Understand Ms. Gibbs' arguments, she's very cogent, but at this point, I'm not ready to vote for a postponement of the ban. I think that town meeting voted for banning single-use plastics, and there's a reason for that. And right now, in my mind, that outweighs the argument to postpone its ban, especially given the notion that we can't find it anyway. And again, I think the market's going to react appropriately. And I don't believe it's necessarily an emergency right now, so I'm not going to vote for the postponement. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Let's see, anything more? Okay, go ahead. Jeff?
Yeah, something I, Selectman, a Select Board member, Dykens just said, resonated with me. It's, every time we've had a written memo from Mr. Temple and the Water Department, except for tonight, it's always says, Chatham water is safe to drink. I think it says that on our website, probably. So, it's, it's kind of hard to declare emergency on one, it's like talking out of both sides of our mouth if we're saying that in one place, and then we're-
About optics.
Yeah. So, you know, that goes to the question of whether, and I'm not reacting because of a potential lawsuit, because I don't think that's likely to happen, but it's hard, it's hard for me to conceive that there is an emergency, but I do understand the issue that was brought, and that's why I'm wrestling with it. But I'm probably going to not support the lifting of it, certainly not for, you know, too long a period of time, but I hope, I hope you understand my reasoning. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dean. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Shereen, I'll get speaking here.
Yeah, so, again, you know, we haven't declared a water emergency. That's, that's a simple fact. And I go back to the idea that there are alternatives to single-plastic bottles, single-use plastic bottles, and they're out there. And I think the businesses are starting to make that shift and trend, you know, as Corey spoke to, in shifting into the alternative packaging. And so, I'm just, I'm not going to go there yet. I mean, we, we don't have a water emergency here. We just don't.
Thank you, Shereen. When I, when I read this, I was ambivalent, I guess that's a good word. I was, I leaned in both ways. I can't, my concern had to do with bottled water. I went online, checked a number of them, read a number of articles that had to do with bottled water, and you're right, they, there's, there are a number of them that are better, a lot of them that you have to be careful with. Seltzer was, great, seltzer was, was the, among the higher, higher ones. There's PFAS in bottled water, in some. There are other things in bottled water. They're not all, they're not all what they claim to be. That was one thing. At the same time, I understand, I had a, I had a concern that what we were going to get into is in a position where if we didn't keep going, we would, we would not be able to get the product that you need, like Corey mentioned. That's why I asked him the question. It's not, I thought bottled water would be the problem, but it's a problem for all products in a number of ways, in its distribution, and we're in the logistics business, in the logistics area, and I understand that. Six months delay, that would take us to when we would have carbon, carbon filters arriving, right? Five and eight would probably be up sometime after that. Is that right, Dr. Bob? Is that a fair statement?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, okay. So, we're talking about a six-month delay, and, and I was, you know, at the beginning of the meeting, I was sort of leaning towards that, and I've gotten away from it, because when, my first question, when Dean brought up the fact of an emergency, was what is our emergency? And I was struggling with that. We could claim an emergency because of PFAS in our water, but our water is safe. So, I kind of, I'm kind of leaning to, actually, I can't support it, Elaine, and I thought I was going to.
Okay, so can I give out all your phone numbers to the people with autoimmune disorders that are trying to struggle up their icy driveways this winter with a gallon? Because that's what, that's what you're saying. I mean, I, I find that pretty ridiculous. You know, we are in, whatever you want to call it, I know you don't want to say it's an emergency, because it doesn't look good, but the fact is, there are people who want to drink bottled water, that they've checked out, that's safe, in smaller containers, because they're old and they're not healthy, and we were told, if you have, Dr. Bob said, if you have autoimmune disorders, you should consider bottled water. So, they would like to do that, but there are people who can't manage it. And so, you know, I know this is the way democracy works, but I thought we would be a little bit more flexible, when we've been going through a really tough two years, and we're going into a winter, and we're going to have more storms, and we're going to lose power, and we've got problems with our drinking water. But, I guess you've spoken-
That's the assumption, I won't say, the assumption is, we have problems with our drinking water, and we don't.
Today, today we don't. But, three months ago, the number was 56, in the same wells. And as Dr. said, Dr. Bob said, it's ubiquitous. We don't know why it shows up and pops up where it does.
Exactly right.
So, tomorrow, they could get tested, and the numbers could be back up again. But then it's too late, because we've canceled our distribution of water to the town. We can't control what the nation does, but we certainly can try and control Chatham.
Okay, I'm going to go, Shereen, and then, Corey.
I could understand your argument and your concern, if there was not alternatives to single-use plastic bottles, there is. There's boxed water, and there's aluminum water availability. And so, it's not like we don't have an alternative to that single use.
So, you want people to go out and buy aluminum bottles, because they're recyclable, to put water in, when aluminum has different kinds of problems. It's, they're sitting in metal containers. I mean, we've decided what the enemy is, and it's single-use clear drinking water turns out to be the biggest enemy. You can only live three weeks without water. There's, you need food, and you need water. And- And, you know, water is more important than food because you can go a lot longer without it. And I, and I just find it, and really insensitive when our population, particularly we're going into the winter and our winter population is elderly, and this is the decision. I really did think it was a no-brainer.
Cory, go ahead.
Just for clarification, because I, I understand, I understand what you're asking. I, I tru, I truly, truly do. But if we were to put a pause on the Chatham ban, it would only apply to water that's sold in Chatham. So, right, so I'm sure there's a lot of folks in Chatham that are shopping in Harwich and other towns that don't have this ban.
They do have the ban. That's the problem. People have to drive off Cape. All of our surrounding towns did the same thing.
There's five towns in Chatham, uh, five towns on the Cape right now, I believe?
It's in the report.
Right.
I think Barnstable is still.
Barst, no, um, Barnstable's okay.
It's Provincetown, Wellfleet, Eastham, Orleans, Harwich, Brewster, and Falmouth, and scheduled to be effective in Sandwich, Chatham, and Dennis on December thirty-first, 2021. Mashpee just voted it for 2022.
So I'd love to support shop local. Trust me, I would. Target, BJ's, um, stores like that will probably carry it in bulk, and they'll probably make a killing off it because it's supply and demand.
Are they going to, they're not, even though they're big stores, they're not going to be allowed to sell it on the Cape, right?
Yeah. Barnstable, BJ's?
Oh, in Barnstable now, but it's just, you're saying that that, that's the only place that we will be able to go.
It will be less places, but there will be play, other places on the Cape that they will probably, you know, make a bit, a business decision. If there's no ban in place, they will probably bulk up on their inventory because it's a, it's a supply and demand type of scenario. You know, right or wrong, that's just, I mean, you're going to find, you're going to find like a BJ wholesale club probably being the place to go get it, or like a Target may be an option. I'm not really sure. Um, you know, I don't know what the larger chains will do. If, if stop and shop in Hyannis will be, you know, selling bottled water where one in, uh, Harwich will not. Uh, that I don't know. You know, the, the CVS changed collectively, you know, one will, one won't. I don't, I don't have an answer for that, but, um, you know, you're, you're already seeing companies cutting back. I do know that.
Okay, let's, um, let's bring it to a vote. Do I need a motion? Or it can be. We have, well, let's see.
It's in effect.
It's in effect, so we really don't have to do anything. Unless, go ahead, Cory.
In effect, and we, unless, if we, we take no action tonight, or if circumstances change that warrant us to justify declaring an emergency, then we can take an action at our will at any point between now and the future.
Yeah.
Jeff? That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Lane. All right. Next up is a, consider a donation of Seaside Links. And Dan still here? No?
I think I saw him online. He might have made it home already.
Danny, you out there?
No, I don't see him here.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would like to, uh, make a recommendation or a motion to accept events for use by golfers at the Seaside Links Golf Course. It's for the left side of the six tee, and the bench will include a plaque stating, "Thanks to the staff of Chatham Seaside Links for making this such an enjoyable course to play. From the Chatham-Harwich newcomers, men's golf."
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? I also would like to thank the, the staff at Chatham Seaside Links and Harwich newcomers, men's golf. Let's take a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Uh, Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you. Next up, uh, consider petition for a private road taking, Linda Lane. This is a, this is a petition, and all we have to do is decide whether or not we want them to continue. Any comments? Uh, let's see. Shawna?
Thank you. Yes, the, um, petitioners required, um, they needed to get nine signatures to, to, uh, excuse me, eight signatures to achieve the seventy-five percent of the property owners to support the takings. Um, we did receive nine out of the eleven, so they have met that threshold. The petition was circulated to department heads for their comments. None had any issues with the process continuing. Um, the next step is for, um, the property owners to even, receive instructions from DPW to contact an engineer to see, to assess the road for what repairs would be needed to bring it up to speed. So that, that's sort of the next step.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from, Cory?
I have a question for clar, for clarification purposes. Um, it always says a private road, but, um, I've been under, understanding that some of that roadway is actually owned by the town of Chatham, and I'd just like to get a response to that one way or another.
The town is in a butter at the end of the cul-de-sac.
Right.
Um, we, that, so technically, the town owns to the center of the road adjacent to that parcel.
Okay, so my follow-up question is, some of the area in that roadway that, at least on my observation, would most likely need, um, a, um, repair or a, you know, maintenance to it, um, is that the butters now? Or is that the town of Chatham?
The town is undertaking some repairs adjacent to our property.
Okay, so we would, um, take care of the town of Chatham's seg, segment, and then determine whether there's anything outside of that area that would be fallen under, under the property owner, property owner's responsibility.
Correct. They would contact an engineer to see anything beyond that section, if it's drainage, if it's tree trimming, if it's whatever, to bring it back up.
That's, I just want to make clarification that there's kind of two, two parties involved. There'll be a butters that are going to have to address and assess what it is and come up with a dollar amount and what action they should take.
Correct.
And then the town of Chatham being, uh, um, aware of what our situation is and what repairs fall under our responsibility.
Correct.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, Dean?
Uh, Shawna, uh, so there are eleven property owners. I assume that Town of Chatham is one of the two that didn't sign the petition.
Correct.
Is, has the eleventh property owner voiced any opposition to this?
The eleventh property owner does not, has not voiced any opposition. They are actually on a separate road, but part of their property abuts.
Okay.
Linda Lane.
It says that if we approve the continuation of the process, the next step would be for the, um, petitioners to contact an engineer to assess any work. Who pays for that engineer?
The butters.
The property owners. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Anything else? So can I have a motion, a motion that, that we allow the petitioners to proceed?
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay, let's take a vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you very much. Okay. Moving on, we're, moving on to the Ch, Chatham Charter Review Committee request for Select Board input on, input on the airport commi, uh, the, uh, public comments received to amend the charter for Select Board to serve as the airport commissioners. Uh, we've gone through a public input on this. The, uh, original, we have an original, uh, proposal before us that we are required to re, uh, required to respond to, that we should respond to, and as I said before, this is a policy issue with the board. Uh, and it, decision-maker is the Airport Commission, which is an independent body. Uh, generally, we spoke to everything. I think, uh, Mr. Castro, it's probably appropriate that you, uh, read your letter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for putting this on the agenda in time for the board to provide input to the Charter Review Committee for their November ninth meeting. And, uh, also thank you for prudently exercising your discretion to allow public comment earlier. Uh, I will read the letter because I think that's important. I know it was in the packet, but, um, I'm sure many people in town have not read it, and we are responding to an invitation from John Carr on the, uh, what I referred to, what he referred to as the Bixby, uh, proposed by Mr. Bixby for the Select Board to serve as the Airport Commissioner that is currently before the Charter Review Committee. And they're the committee that has the jurisdiction to determine what they want to recommend goes in the charter or not. We don't do that. Uh, we, we make a recommendation for town meeting on an article that they, they would put, put forward, but, um, we're simply opining on the wisdom or not of, um, and, uh, a proposal that's in front of them. So that's what I'm addressing. Um, I think, and I'll say upfront, I think that, um, the sense of what I'm about to read is that, um, the opposition that I'm proposing and, uh, to the concept of the Select Board being the Charter Review Committee would extend beyond, uh, the proposal that, um, is currently before the Charter Review Committee. Um, I, I am fundamentally opposed to it in concept, in whatever formulation. So this is a, a letter that I've drafted, um, and I'm putting it forward to the board to consider approving and sending, um, um, to, to the Charter Review Committee forthwith if, if adopted. It's dated November second, twenty twenty-one, to the Charter, Chatham Charter Review Committee from the Chatham Select Board regarding Bixby proposal. Select Board is the Airport Commissioner, Commission. Dear Chair Carr and, and Charter Review Committee Members, thank you for inviting our perspective on the above matter. The Chatham Select Board strongly opposes the proposal to have the Select Board assume the powers and duties of the Airport Commission. This proposal is fundamentally flawed, and it would appear to be driven essentially by proponent unhappiness with certain actions or decisions of the Airport Commission. Our reasoning is as follows. One, the threshold question to be asked is why make this change? Respectfully, we believe that changes to the town's overarching governance document should not be presented to the voters without first identifying a problem that requires correction. Mere dissatisfaction with the actions or even the direction of the Airport Commission is not a structural problem that requires radical change. The remedy for airport critics is to persuade the Select Board to appoint different commissioners. Failing that, their remedy is to persuade the voters to elect different Select Board members. The fact that incumbent Select Board members have been consistently returned to office by the voters for several years now suggests that whatever concerns some might have about airport operations, the existing model of airport governance has not been an issue of major concern among the broader electorate, or that widespread dissatisfaction among the citizen, citizenry over it does not exist. The results of our electoral democracy are the best evidence that there is no structural infirmity in the airport, in the area of airport governance. Two, the current and ongoing workload of the Select Board makes it an impossible practicality for the Select Board to assume the powers and duties of the Airport Commission. There is no sensible way the Select Board could devote adequate time to its multiple budgeting, policy, executive oversight, project prioritization, and programming, constituent service, and custodial responsibilities for the town if it were to take on the airport as well. These multiple responsibilities have grown dramatically over recent years and will continue to grow. Just imagine the reduced level of attention that might have had to be given to issues like COVID-19, PFAS six, housing and coastal resiliency, had the Select Board had to deal with the airport on a regular basis. Nor in general do Select Board members themselves have the expertise and time to keep themselves knowledgeable and current about FAA and mass DOT regulations and policies, and the voluminous documents and legal authorities that comprise the federal and state statutory scheme that governs Massachusetts airports. Three, the proposal as presented offers no assurance that the Select Board will always include a member with, with experience in aeronautics as required by Massachusetts law. Town Council has advised that by virtue of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter ninety, Section fifty-one E, at least one member of an Airport Commission must have experience in aeronautics. Because the composition of the Select Board is serendipitously determined by the voters at annual town elections, having the Select Board function as the Airport Commission falls short of this statutory requirement. Four, there is no legitimate comparison with the Select Board's functioning as the town's water and sewer commissioners. We do not meet formally as water and sewer commissioners on any regular basis. In any given year, the Select Board convenes, as such, no more frequently than on a handful of occasions, essentially as the appellate body on water abatement requests or in regard to sewer connection applications, or to approve rates, regulations, or policies. Our role in this sphere is infrequent, and it is not delegated to the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, which, as it name, as its name implies, has a very distinct charge. Nor does the Select Board actually manage the water and sewer divisions. That function is carried out by town staff with consultant assistance. By contrast, functioning as the Airport Commission would require a significant level of Select Board involvement on a regular and ongoing schedule. Five, the proposal's formulation is internally inconsistent. In the first instance, the powers and duties of the Airport Commission are to be conferred upon the Select Board, but in the very next paragraph, the Select Board is authorized to delegate the custody, care, and management of the airport to a committee. The delegation provision inexplicably, inexplicably goes on to say, quote, "At no time shall the rights, powers, and authorities of the Airport Committee supersede those of the Commission." This authorization creates a confusing and self-defeating internal dialectic that defies common sense and is not likely very well definable or indeed workable. Multiple jurisdictional disputes can be anticipated from this formulation. Six, the proposal's authorization to sell, so delegate might well constitute an overdelegation incompatibly with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter ninety, Section fifty-one E, in violation of the doctrine of statutory delegation. In the opinion of Town Council, this authority to delegate, quote, "would be inconsistent with the expressed language of General Laws, Chapter ninety-six, Section fifty-one E, and thus improper under the doctrine of statutory allegation." See the opinion of Town Council dated October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one attached. Seven, even should the proposal be adopted, proponents' expectations for changing the direction of airport management, management might not be fulfilled. A, the town's abilities to direct airport operations will still be limited by and subject to the same federal and state statutory and regulatory, statutory and regulatory scheme, and the same FAA and mass DOT controls, policies, guidance, and directives. And B, the Select Board's appointments to an Airport Committee would be dependent upon the composition of the Select Board itself, which could very well appoint to the Airport Committee the very same individuals who have been serving on the Airport Committee, uh, Commission. Eight, no other town airport in Massachusetts has its Select Board as the Airport Commission. This information is confirmed by the airport's consultant, Gail Associates. See the October twenty, twenty-one, uh, email from the Airport Commission Chair, which is attached. For these reasons, the Select Board respectfully urges the Charter Review Committee to reject this highly inadvisable proposal. Sign the Chatham Select Board. So that, that's, that's the letter. Those are the reasons I think we should submit, um, in, in opposition, uh, and in response to Mr. Carr's invitation to us. I'm happy to offer a motion, but if you want to have some discussion among the board members first, happy to defer.
Thank you, Dean. Uh, do I have anyone? Cory? No, no, I.
No one first.
I'll, I'll, I'll just make a couple of comments. Unless Jeff, you wanted to go, I can. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, um, Dean, well-written and well-articulated. The, the, the most egregious, and then this is the, the, uh, the proposal that has been most recently submitted. I did not see the one that was submitted today, and, and so I hold my comments, or I have my comments in light of what was submitted, um, prior to today. Uh, but the, the most egregious, uh, issues for me for the Select Board becoming the Airport Commission is that, um, and with the proposal that was presented, is I, I was really confused about the commission versus the committee, and Dean addresses that, excuse me, um, with number five, the proposal's formulation is internally consistent. I was very confused, and I think it would cause much confusion about who actually has custody, care, and management of the airport, whether it's the committee or the commission. I think that is not, that is not a proper formulation whatsoever. I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about resident expertise as a Select Board member. Um, as a selectman or Select Board member, I find myself having, after having, having to have a knowledge base that's a mile wide and a foot deep. You have to know a lot about some stuff, and you have to know less about other stuff, but it's impossible to know everything there is to know about everything. It's impossible. There are so many issues, as Dean also noted in his, in his memo, to, to doing an effective job as a selectman. To add the responsibilities of being an Airport Commissioner to those, to those already present responsibilities, I think, is extremely onerous. I think we already have the, the mechanism and the structure in place to manage the airport. I found the comments tonight to be. I found the comments tonight to be, some of them to be, they were very passionate. We have a very articulate and passionate citizenry here, and they're very passionate, and we've heard it over a number of years. I think there may be other ways, and I don't have the answer tonight, but there may be other ways to infuse the decision-making process with our preference for policies at the airport. I do not have the answer tonight, but I'm willing to listen to other mechanisms to get our sentiments about policy going forward at the airport in the queue, if you will. The other issue I had was statutory authority. And I know Pat says we can be the Airport Commission, but I have concern about where we land with state and federal FAA stricture and statutory authority. The point that Renee made about we'd have to get permission from the FAA and their aeronautics division to mess with this, I think, is also going to be difficult and onerous, and they're likely to not look upon our proposal or our becoming commissioners with a positive stance. I don't know. I'm making that up. But, so anyway, I'm concerned that we'd be taking on too much. Is that selfish? I don't think so. Again, I feel as though we have huge span of control already, and to add this would be extremely burdensome to the Board of Selectmen, and that's truly what I think, what I feel, what I know. So I am in agreement with Selectman Castro's position paper, and I would suggest that we send it off to the Charter Review. That being said, I am interested in the discussion. I'm interested in what the Charter Review has to say and thinks, and I'm interested in further conversation, but this proposal, I cannot support. Thank you.
Thank you. Corey, and then Shereen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I want to thank Select Board Member Nick Castro for drafting the letter for consideration, putting out his opinion, and putting this out for discussion. I thought hard about this, and to be frank, I'm not strongly opposed to the concept, but I am in no way, shape, or form advocating for it. I think there are a lot of details, hurdles, that would maybe make it not an ideal solution. What I am interested in is not waiting seven months for Charter Review potentially voted up or down to start addressing what many have concerns about the airport. I think now, at some level, and I don't know the details of how we can start getting this ball rolling, I'd like to see this board, town manager, airport commission, airport manager, the public, roll up our sleeves and figure out what's going on. The policymakers have a voice. We are the policymakers of this community, supported by the voters who put us in the office. And we appoint the airport commissioners. You know, everyone has their role, and we need to collectively work through this. Maybe some of the final decisions may not be what the outcome is for some, you know, people may not be happy with some of the outcomes, but we have to have these discussions, and we got to start a policy, be clear what the policy of this board is. I mean, personally, I very much support our airport. I think it's a wonderful asset for the town, and it has a place, and it should, you know, I think the envelope that I have of, the vision I have of the airport, and that envelope that it should stay within, is being pushed. And I think it would make a lot of sense to have a more regional approach on the table. We have Marshall Airport nearby, and all the attributes of the runways and the towers and everything that we could use on a regional approach, but that's a different conversation. I think we can address this at a different level, but I think collectively is the only way to start having that conversation, and we don't need to wait seven months to potentially have it. We need to start having it now. So as far as having a charter change and making the Select Board the Airport Commission, I don't know necessarily that's an answer. I think I don't want to wait that long. I want to start working on it now, because, you know, yes, our Town Council has opined certain restrictions this board can and cannot do with the airport, but at the end of the day, and I'll be frank about it, you know we take the heat on a lot of this stuff, and the Airport Commissioners take a heat on a lot of its stuff. We should work together. That's the only way we can fix it, and I would hope maybe the Airport Commission, you know, in the areas that we're not technically allowed to have authority on, invite us. Maybe that's not the approach you guys want us to take, but I'd like to have a collective conversation and address these issues one by one, and maybe we come with consensus on some of them, and maybe we don't. But I don't want to wait six months to deal with this. So those are my thoughts. I respect Select Board Member Castro's letter. I'm not going to support it because I don't feel that strongly about the opposition of it, but I do think we should collectively start working on this now, because it's just the benefit of everybody. We have to flush out these discussions.
Shereen.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Dean, for putting this letter together. I think it puts our points across very clearly and concisely as to, at least from my perspective, why I don't think it's a good idea as well to change the Airport Commission's makeup the way it is. And I think it, you know, and I start to think about, you know, folks that want to run for selectmen, and this would be one of those onerous sort of things that you would be looking at to say, is this something I can, you know, commit to? As Jeff had said, that there's a lot that we, that goes across our plate, and a lot that we try to know a lot about, and a lot we do our best we can. We make up a good contingency of people, obviously, that have a level of expertise and representation to the town. One of the things that really stood out to me in the letter, Dean, was to first identify the problem, and I think that as we've moved forward in the last couple of years, and we've seen some very, you know, passionate, contentious meetings between the public and the Airport Commission, where we've talked to them, called them to task on that, changed up the makeup of the committee, and then moved forward with two Select Board meetings about the governance of the committee, and to have the public have a better understanding of where things lie. And I think that the other point that I see is mere dissection about the, you know, what's happening is not where, there's no say that we are going to change any of that if we are the committee, the Airport Commission. I think that when I look at the mission statement of the airport, it is really flawed when it does not speak to the community having concerns or issues that, you know, express any language around the community or the public's goodwill. And I think that that's a start in the right direction, is to change that up and say, look, we know, and we have said all along, and we want to see, that the community engagement in the process, and that you are looking at it through not just the lens of the user, but through the lens of the community and the greater good. And I think that can be achieved, and if it's not achieved, then we reappoint a different committee. I mean, we're not going to, we're not going to change things overnight. We haven't been able to do that, and this is a frustrating process for some of the people. There's a lot of people in this town that absolutely love the airport, absolutely love the airport, and don't see a problem with what's going on, so we need to balance that out as well. So I'm going to support the letter, going to the Charter Review Committee, and I am interested as well to see what the Charter Review Committee has to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Shereen. I have a couple of comments. I'm probably the closest individual here to being at least experienced with aeronautics. I originally, four or five years ago, I had empathy for some of the people and some of the concerns that they had about the airport. And "had" is not the right word. Some of those I still do. It's tough to be, to live underneath an airport. I've lived near and under airports, airport flight zones a number of times. Dean's letter, I think, is well-thought-out. He brings the points out. There are a number of things that were said tonight, that I understand passionately how the people feel about the airport, about where they're coming from, and the issues that they had with the Airport Commission. I had, when I first became liaison to the Airport Commission, I had some concerns about the way they were running their meetings. Now, some would say they haven't changed. Yeah, they have. They have somewhat. The relationship between the board and the airport. My predecessor was always there, or participated, followed what was going on. I follow them. Here is my concern. To understand, the words that "policy" are thrown around, I think, too generally. We are the policymakers for the town. The comments that were made tonight indicated that we were the policymakers, and we could drive the direction of this airport. And the Airport Commission has not been thinking about that. Now, I want to, let's take a step back. As Shereen said, we had two meetings, one December of last year and again September of this year, that spoke to governance and the regulations and the state and federal regulations that apply to airports. They apply to airports in every town. We have a small, regional, small airport. It is controlled, it is managed by the Airport Commission, like was said. We have to remember certain things. We're dealing with federal law. We're not dealing with bureaucrats. We're dealing with federal law that's appropriate to all airports. For instance, and I don't know whether the Charter Review will allow this, but my comments, we are, the Airport Commission is making a commercial airport. They are driving it to become something larger than it is. And I can understand how people can get that opinion. They didn't bring it up, but they are against any kind of instrument landing that's coming in. We should keep the airport to be a visual airport, sort of visual. We do have an instrument of sorts that's going away, beacon, and it'll remain a nice small airport. Well, what, you know, where are we? The airport is the airport now, and it has certain airplanes flying in that people don't want here. They talk about turbopops flying in. They talk about small jets flying in. And why is that? They don't come here to go somewhere else. We're a destination for tourists, and those that can afford it will fly in on an airplane. If you own your own airplane, it isn't that expensive. I'll tell you that much. Some airplanes are not that expensive. The airport, the airplanes that can come in here are defined by the length of the runway and by federal law. FAA determines that. Are we going to change that as a Select Board? Well, we'll shorten the runway. As some have said, you shorten the approach so that Chatham can have land, you have a runway protection zone, so you move that, so then you can develop that. Well, it's already developed, for whatever reason, right? Wrong, or whatever. The comment that nobody knows it was there, I was on a planning board for seven years, I knew it was there. We put affordable housing to make sure, the question we asked was whether or not the affordable housing was in the approach zone, and it was right on the edge. All right, so it's on the edge. That doesn't make, you know, many airports have the same problem. The runway protection zone is not going to change. It's not going to grow any higher than it is, than it was before. That's a fact. It could change later on because of other circumstances, but since 1951, it's the same, it's the same, it's the same one. So my point here is, that's a policy. Airplanes that come in here, come in here because they're allowed to, because they can land here. If you move that runway protection zone up and get rid of it, what do you do? You shorten the runway. And that's going to get rid of the Pilatuses that are coming in here? Nope. They can land in 2,000 feet, or somewhere around that. They have a jet that lands in something less than that. You're, where, this is technology. Best technologies when you have electric airplanes, and that's about to happen. So my point is, the policy of what the Select Board can do as an elected group is bounded by federal law and state law. We can drive certain directions an airport can maybe go into, but are we going to say, which I've heard some say, we don't want instrument landings because they're going to bring in more airplanes? We're a destination. Any flyer will tell you that an instrument landing is safer. The argument is, well, you go down to 200 feet, and I hate to get into the details, but why is it, if you're a visual and you're in marginal, marginal conditions, would you go into a circling, looking for the airport to clear up, and you go 600 feet and you're driving around? If you're in an instrument landing, you come in, you don't see it, you go. Here's the other point. We're becoming more commercialized. I can understand how people think that. I have a picture of a 1967 Charter Aircraft Company that was here in Chatham. It flew out of here. It had charters at that time. That was 1967. This airport was able to manage to have, it looked like a twin-engine Mohawk. If anybody is old enough to remember Sky King, that's the airplane that they had. But that's the critical point. This is not going to solve all the problems that they think they, in my opinion, that they think they're going to solve. It's still going to be the same way. You're still going to have to deal with FAA. I agree with Shereen. I believe that every commissioner should understand, and it's not like we haven't told them, they are the managers of that airport, but they're also the representatives of the town and the Airport Commission. Now, how do we work that? I understand what Corey's saying. We've got to figure a way to work this out. You're still going to have to figure a way. Charter Review is going to, if what we have now is a proposal in front of us that has been changed yesterday because of inputs that were put there, which we haven't looked at closely, I have, I still have the same problem with it as far as policy is concerned. The Charter Review Committee is going to make a decision on what? Trying to decide what's going to, how that proposal should be worked? I mean, come on. We spent, here we had a meeting a year ago on governance, and we thought, oh, we were pretty good. Time went on, and then all of a sudden we had the same arguments again. So I got frustrated and said, we'll have to do it again. I can understand how people would not understand it. It's not rocket science, but it is a different organization, and it's not different than some of our regulatory committees. But here we are with a changed proposal, right? We've gone through two meetings. We have a proposal to make the Select Board. That didn't work out well because Dean's letter came out, you know, sooner, and I'm going to assume that they saw flaws in their, or maybe David saw flaws, so he wants to change it to make better. I get that. What is that? It's kind of, I hate to use this descriptive, like throwing spaghetti against the wall and see what sticks. You know, you just keep on changing it. We can't do that. Corey has a good point about putting something together to do it. It's going to take time. I don't think it's going to change too much. I hate to say that because I'm pretty open, even tonight. I know people were upset with me, but I still believe this was a policy decision, but I'll lean to having more public opinion. So this whole idea of runway protection zone, you're not allowed, you're going to, it's going to expand. They're not. The type of aircraft, we're going to stop them coming in. No, you're not, unless we go to FAA and they approve it. They set that policy. You're going to, we're going to stop certain, not only certain airplanes, we're not going to have commercial airplanes come in. You can't do that. It's like saying you can't put a commercial truck on a road. So there's a whole host of things that, and I understand where they're coming from. They get upset by, they weren't being heard, and yes, we wanted to have, I thought we should have a citizens group. The Airport Commission decided they didn't want to because they've already gone through the whole process. Okay, that's fine. I would have not done that. But that's where I'm coming from. So I support the letter. I think the letter also, in some way, supports what Charter Review Committee, they shouldn't have to do this. We should have a proposal that goes to the Charter Review Committee, if there is a way to manage it, that would go there, that they can understand, not change it. to, to manage it, that would go there, that they can understand, not change it every time just to, just to see what's going to fly. And I understand the frustration. One thing we can do, one thing that has been done in other places, and I know this from experience, you have, you have people that live underneath the runway. And, and, and I know that the airport commission said FAA won't approve this, but people that live under the runway, it's hard to live under a runway. And this year, I sat with more than one, and it is, it's noisy. We had more airplanes this year than we ever had. They had small airplanes. The one they didn't complain about was the helicopter, which is even louder. But, but, but my point is, that's something you can address with FAA. And maybe there are ways. I'm told you can't do this. You can't set times. You can't, I believe you can. And I believe if the town comes together, we can do that. And the airport commission's not going to be happy about that because they've gotten the information from FAA. But I know we can do, do that, given the right circumstances. Now, organizing how we are going to deal with FAA? Okay, you think it's going to change? No. We're dealing with federal, federal law and, and not bureaucrats. You're dealing with, with, with something that applies across the board, and I'm repeating myself now. So I'm going to support, support the letter. Cory, go ahead.
Just going to make one final closing comment. I mean, my, my vote in opposition of this, of the letter is because I don't feel as strongly opposed to this as the tone of the letter is drafted. I'm certainly not advocating for it. I think it has some flaws in it, but maybe there's a model that would work, whatever. This is just a recommendation from this board to the charter review. They're going to take recommendations from everyone else and make their own determination of what they put forward at the Maytown meeting. So this is not a final determination. This is just a, this is what we've collectively decided to send to the charter review committee on this issue. I, I'm assuming kind of in lieu of individually going to their meeting on the date, their next meeting. So, you know, I just want to keep dialogue open. I'd like to take some action now. But, you know, don't get my, my vote against the letter saying that I want us to absolutely become the airport commission. I think it has some flaws, so just want to be, be clear on that.
Anyone else? Shereen?
No, I think we'll, I'm, make a motion to approve the letter as written by select board member Castro in response to Chair Carr and the charter review committee members to send this letter over to them for their review and consideration.
A second.
Second?
That would be with the attachments.
With the attachments included.
Yeah, a second. Any more discussion? Okay, start with.
I just, just want to say, I do respect Board Member Matters' comments, and I understand, you know, where he's coming from. So, thank you. And my thanks to the other board members, all the board members actually, for their comments on the, on the letter.
Okay, ready for a vote? Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Cory?
Nay.
Shereen?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you very much. Okay, next on our agenda is Chatham. We've been notified by, that we've seen a letter. Chatham elected school committee vacancy. Joe Osziello, he resigned on October 20th. We don't have a, a formal notice from the, from the school committee, so.
Mr. Chair.
This is more information for all of us. And I'll, I'll turn it over to Jeff since he. Oh, I'm sorry.
So, I'm sorry, excuse me. So, we have not received notification from the remaining members of the Chatham elected school board members to the Montomay Regional School District, but I'm told it's expected likely Thursday. So I thought it was important that we have this information in the packet because it will be a pretty quick turnaround, presuming that the school committee will want that position filled, and it will be a joint roll call vote, as long as you do get notice by them. And I thought it was important to put it out there. There's a couple of people who were interested, and I don't really have a process for them, but I thought it was important for you to see what the timeline is and, and the master in our law as well.
That was good, yeah. That's a question. I saw that we were, you'd be taking a vote. Do we, do we have an interview process with them together with the school committee?
I believe that was the case back in 2016. There was a letter that the town clerk had provided, and you did do interviews.
So what we, we should probably let people know that it's available and also try to decide on a decision date for people to put something in. Can we do that now or based on when the letter comes in or?
Yeah, because we don't have the official notification and that we're not having a regular select board meeting next week, I think that once we get the notification, we typically allow for at least two weeks for people to have that opportunity, especially with the holidays coming up, to submit a letter of interest or a talent bank form. And then we have to give a week's notice, according to the general law, when you do make that appointment. So I, I think that it, I think we can open it up and we could, I'm not sure if you want to set a deadline on your own. I think it's going to be a little challenging in the next couple of weeks to get the Chatham school board members here to a meeting, especially with one vacancy. And I think there's one of them, one of the members that's unavailable and hopefully will be available this Thursday.
Could we do a, I'm thinking if, have a suspense date that people can send in their, their interest letters, you know, like so many, two weeks after, after we received the letter from the school board, school committee?
Sure. So unless you, you want to set that date, I don't have my.
I don't know. I should turn it over. I'm going to.
I'm sure we can.
I'm going to ask the board, too. Do you?
I see we prepare ourselves for as quickly as possible. I mean, we got the regional agreement discussion that's going to be coming down the pipeline and everything else. I want to be able to have the opportunity to fill this position as soon as possible. So whatever timetable that is efficient for us without pushing the envelope, I support.
Okay. Dean, I, I went past Jeff the last time, and then I'll come back. Sorry, Jeff.
Thank you, Peter. Yeah, I echo Selectman Matters' concern. We want to get this appointment in as soon as possible. We have some significant issues coming forward at the school committee. And I was heartened to hear that we have some folks that are interested. So I think let's get the letter, let's reach out to the folks that are interested, and let's ask other people if they're interested, and let's get, let's get interviewing. And then we've done this before, and it worked very successfully when we had a joint meeting with the board of selectmen and the Chatham members of the school committee. We've done this before, it worked very well, so.
Thank you, Dean.
Yeah, I echo, echo those comments. I would suggest that, and it sounds like we're going to do it, we have sufficient notification process for the public who might be interested. We put it on our website or on the list of vacancies, maybe even a special notice on the website on the, on one of the more prominent pages.
Yes.
And I think we should have a cutoff date that maybe possibly two weeks after we get notification. I, I, you know, I don't care what it is. I just think there should be some ending date so that we can then set, set the interviews up.
Yeah, so if we get a notification, say, on Friday the 5th, then two weeks from that Friday would be the 19th, and that would potentially allow for either a joint meeting or joint discussion. It would be the week of Thanksgiving, or it would be the following week.
So you could be prepared to just, do you need a vote tonight from us to authorize you to put that notice out and establish that cutoff date? If that's agreeable to everybody?
If you're amenable to having a two-week period, I, I think that we can fulfill that pretty easily.
That's fine with me.
Fine with that, yeah.
Good. Got a consensus?
You don't need a vote.
You're okay?
No, so I don't need a vote, so that would be great.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, can I have a motion?
We don't need a vote.
Did you say you don't need?
Don't need a vote. I'm sorry, I don't need a vote. I see our town clerk is on, but she doesn't have her hand raised, so I think that we're okay to.
Let me do this. You don't need.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We do not need a vote, but we'll anticipate it will be two weeks after we receive the formal notification from the school committee.
All right. Okay, good. Thank you. Let's get on to our last comment. Oh, no, a second to last. We have repres- pre- re-presincting. Interestingly enough, we'd be going to two precincts. So Julie, are you on? Thank you for your.
Good evening.
Thank you for your patience.
You're welcome. I will not be long, since we've been here for quite some time. I just wanted to mention that it's been a long process, but the census 2020 has finally been completed, and we have been advised that our population has increased from 6,125 residents in 2010 to 6,594 residents. So now we are required to become two precincts. The LEDRC, which is the Local Elections District's Review Commission, has reviewed our data and drawn new precinct lines, dividing the town as equally as possible. So now Precinct 1 will have 3,399 voters, and Precinct 2 will have 3,195 voters, a difference of 204 voters between the two precincts. So our next step is to ask you to vote to approve the new map, the legal description, and to sign a certified copy of your vote in order for me to forward to the LEDRC. The new precinct lines will become effective on December 31st, 2021, and remain in place until 2030, when the next federal census will be conducted. We will notify the voters at the beginning of next year with an insert in our annual town census about their new potential, new precincts. Also, we will be purchasing an additional voting machine for the additional precincts, and we do have the funds to purchase that machine. And also, both precincts will vote in our usual location at the community center. So that's the process that we're at, at this point, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Okay, I see Jeff's hands up.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the changes to the precinct map as proposed by the Secretary of State, and that we sign a certified copy of the vote attached and return to the town clerk for its mailing.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? I do have one question, Julie, and it's unfair.
Okay.
Has the change, you know, 474 individuals changed our demographics much as far as seniors and whatever, or it's too early to tell?
Yeah, it's a little early to, to know that. I haven't quite dug that deep down into what our numbers are or what their demographic is, but we'll, we'll probably, we'll get, we'll get that information.
Yeah, that's okay. I, I didn't think so, but I figured I'd ask. Okay, let's take a vote. Shereen?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to the last. The following motion for appointments to the Community Preservation Committee. And we have two different ones.
Mr. Chair?
Good, Chair.
I move to appoint Art Spurts to the Community Preservation Committee as the Planning Board Representative until June 30th, 2023, unless sooner revoked or successor is appointed.
All right, fine. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, okay, let's go. Shereen?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
And Jeff?
Aye.
All right, we have a next one for the.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Alan Maury to the Community Preservation Committee as the Housing Authority Representative until June 30th, 2023, unless sooner revoked or successor is appointed.
Thank you. Second? Okay, we'll start down on the other end. Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. And that's it for tonight. Jeff?
Mr. Chair, I was remiss in not mentioning in our discussion the school committee vacancy to thank Joe Osziello for his service on the, on the school committee. He certainly stands, I don't know how many years he was there, a while, and he represented Chatham well, and he's a man of integrity. So I just want to thank him for his, for his service.
Thank you, Jeff. Yeah, I, I was remiss also, and he's a super guy.
I want to echo that.
I, I agree.
Agree.
All board, yeah, thanks him for his service. How are you, Jeff?
We do send out letters of thanks for people, right, Shawna?
Yeah.
Yeah, I meant to mention it earlier and I didn't, but with that, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, let's start with Cory.
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye.